Problem, they couldn't find a end of a water pipe on the Valley View project. Can you tell us what the status is?
Yeah, we heard that they found the water pipe the day after the compliance hearing and that a hydrant was installed last week and it appears that the water main construction is in progress right now.
Because they gave us a 10 to 14 days that the contractor said and today is probably like 14 days, so they gotta pave the road too.
I checked it out today, actually, and it doesn't appear to be paved.
No, they didn't have to pave it in 14 days, Stan. They had to sort of get the basic water structure in way because they've got till Thanksgiving, basically, when the plant shuts.
Yeah, I think we gave them 45 days for that.
Mm-hmm.
To finish with that, how's the neighbor's yard? I went, I did go the day after and I noticed that they saw the pipe, but it was a big old hole in the neighbor's yard. They got the neighbor's yard put back together?
I didn't notice a hole, but the stone wall is down slightly, so that will still need some work.
Okay.
The only reason I ask is if you brought up the 45 days till Thanksgiving, he waited till the last day to look for the water pipe. So he'll probably do the same thing for paving. So, but you were so generous that you gave him 45 days.
Well, they did get out there the next day for the water pipe. I don't know how the paving will play out, but I'll give them, I think, give them the benefit of the doubt. Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's be positive.
Yes, why don't we? Any other comments or questions by members of the board for the staff? Seeing none. Next item on our agenda is Edgebrook Heights LLC as the applicant and Edgebrook Heights LLC, Wiggston Properties LLC, and Q. Peter Nash, 1987 Revocable Trust I as the owners, and it's a pre-submission hearing for consideration of an application to amend a previously improved conditional use permit to permit a future mixed-use development consisting of retail, office, multifamily residential, and assisted living. Parcels are located at 1373955 and an unnumbered parcel on DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aqua Conservation, and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts, Tax Map 1E Lot 4142, 2E, 62, 7, and 8. Jillian, do we need to know anything before we hear from the applicant?
Just that the applicant approached staff about changing the assisted living facility use to a use that's more in between your typical elderly housing and assisted living. So they're here tonight to talk about that with that board.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself for the record. Don't forget to sign in and tell us what you want us to consider here tonight.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer at Weiner Bennett at 111 Congress Street in Nashua, represent Edgebrook Heights and the co-owners of the property. With me is Chris Trevissani from Calamar Enterprises from the greater Buffalo, New York area. What we would like to talk with you about tonight, as the agenda indicates, is a pre-submission discussion relative to potential amendment to the master concept plan that you approved in connection with a conditional use permit last August. Just, I'm just gonna take a couple moments to set the stage and then Chris is gonna walk through in relatively brief fashion a PowerPoint presentation that explains what Calamar does and the type of project that he'd like to see as a possibility here in Merrimack.
Okay.
The board recalls that last August you granted a conditional, final approval for the conditional use permit for these properties on Daniel Webster Highway for mixed-use commercial residential development. Board recalls that properties contain about 35 acres in total. And the components of the project, as you approved them in August, were cul-de-sac road with utility infrastructure as main as the primary access, proposed a one-story retail gas station site along Daniel Webster Highway, the five-building, 156 apartment units, a site for a one-story retail building that could conceivably include a restaurant, a 74-bed assisted living facility also on Daniel Webster Highway, and the potential two-story commercial office building site or even conceivably industrial use at some point in the future depending upon what uses that are attracted by the project. The fiscal study, as you recall, demonstrated each phase of the project had a positive fiscal impact on the town. The, we talked about phasing at that time and at the time, the concept of phasing that was discussed at the final meeting before you was after infrastructure, road, utility systems was in, the first phase would consist of a combination of the gas station, retail site, and the apartments. Just show you two things, Mr. Chairman. I get to play engineer light, very light. The original, this is the original concept plan and this was the three-acre parcel that contemplated the assisted living facility because around, all around the corner was the apartments. The gas station site was here. And...
Don't go away from the mic, Mr. Westgate.
You can take one with you if you want.
I'm coming back.
Can you move your display a little bit further over so some of the guys can hear it?
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's good, right there, I think.
I didn't want to talk over there anyway. Thank you. So now, it's hard to see given having you in the room, but the senior community that Calamar would contemplate would be now on a four-acre site for three acres from the assisted living facility and then an additional acre taken from the residential lot, the apartment lot. So it's the same basic location, but with an acre added.
Okay.
So I'll now turn it over to Chris Trevissani to tell you about Calamar and what they do and their ideas for this community.
Thank you. Brad?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present my company and our interest in building a community in Merrimack. My name again is Chris Trevissani. I'm the Director of Development for Calamar Enterprises. And what I want to do is just briefly describe our company and the type of community that we build. And that way, the board fully understands what it is that we're asking for in terms of modification of the permits that are in place. So, who is Calamar? We're a multifaceted real estate development company. We're based in the Buffalo, New York area, and we've been doing medical office and senior housing for 20 years now. This community would be our second community in the New England area. We did recently receive site plan approval in the town of Londonderry last week, so we're hoping to satisfy those conditions of approval and start construction this year. So that one is a 110 dwelling unit community in the town of Londonderry.
Chris, can I ask you to speak a little bit louder?
Sure. What do our communities include? Our communities include a large community room with kitchens for community events. The other amenities, we have a modern movie theater, libraries, individual, and larger laundry facilities, game rooms, exercise rooms, and lounges on each floor. Our communities are not for sale. They're independent living apartments. So what we offer to our residents is a lifestyle coordinator and a concierge. Again, it's independent living. It's not assisted living. So what this person does is it does not, we don't provide services to our tenants, but we help arrange services for our tenants. So if transportation's needed to and from a doctor's office and perhaps their car isn't working or they need a ride somewhere, our concierge is there to help them facilitate with kind of day-to-day activities and also help with group activities. As the community evolves and grows, those group activities tend to evolve in terms of the resident population planning those communities and events. So the five communities that we have in New York, we have Forest View in Buffalo, The Woodlands in Buffalo, Eagle Crest, which is another suburb of Buffalo, and Orchard Park. And then we have two other ones in Painted Post, which is down in Southern Tier, New York, and then Auburn Grove, we just opened up, which is outside of Syracuse, New York.
Those are all open and operating?
Yes. We have five communities in the Midwest. Woodbridge in Omaha, Nebraska, Harrison Heights in La Vista, Nebraska, The Grand Reserve in Elkhorn, Nebraska, The Springs in Independence, Missouri, and then View Crest Point in Kansas City. That one is still under construction. So to give you a feel of what our communities look like, I'll give you a photographic tour of Forest View. This is our facility in Buffalo, New York. To the upper left is a picture of our community room. Again, we do not offer meals to our tenants, but we have a space large enough for events for the entire population. To the upper right is the movie theater that I referred to. It's more of a larger, higher-end, intimate type of movie theater that, you know, we can either hold community events where people sign up or other tenants can sign it up for private showings for guests. And then the bottom left is just a view of our entry and then the bottom right is the internal picture of as you enter our facility. You can see the exercise room on the right and another library to the left. This is a picture of what our apartments look like. Again, independent living. We have a fully functioning kitchen, gas stove, microwave, kitchen, dishwasher. Again, all of our tenants are ambulatory and do provide for themselves. So talking about our tenants, of the 10 facilities that we have, we do focus groups. We kind of learn from our residents in terms of what they need. We think we know what they need, but they know what they need. So who's living in our communities? The average age is 72 years old. You know, as we age, we're still more active. I think, you know, 10 years ago, the active adult communities, people were thinking we're 55 and over. You know, we're at 62 and 72 and over and we're still able to live independently without the need for services. The female-to-male percentages are 60/40. 90% are retired, 10% still work part-time and/or volunteer in the community. On average, you know, 15 hours a week. The usage of vehicles, you know, our tenants on average across the board, three to five times a week. So what our communities include, we have a variety of one- and two-bedroom apartments and those sizes range from 865 to 1,075 square feet. There's no buy-in fees. There's no deposits, no surcharges. It is an apartment community. People sign one-year leases. The rents do include cable, water, refuse removal, and hot water. The way our utilities function through the building is it's one main gas meter, which includes heat and hot water, and then tenants pay their own electric. We are 100% smoke-free community. And again, as I described earlier, the monthly planned community activities are as decided by the individuals who live in the community. So they take advantage of the facilities that we provide. And lastly, the community benefits, you know, how are we a benefit to your community and how we benefited the other nine communities that we're in right now? Is we provide an alternative housing option for the fastest-growing segment of the population. We find there's a tremendous need for seniors in the community who, whose current housing option doesn't fit their needs anymore. Maybe a spouse has passed away and they're still living in their home and they don't want to bear the burden of homeownership. But they still are able to drive. They're still able to cook their own meals. They like their own cooking and they don't, they're not ready for, nor do they need an assisted living type of arrangement, nor do they want to start paying for that. So this provides a good housing option and fills what we think is a void and a product that's designed specifically for this age group. In terms of the construction, we do create jobs and actually retain jobs. So in terms of short-term and long-term, it does create some construction jobs, but also could keep people employed in this area for another 18 months to 24 months while construction's going on. What we've proven in all of our other communities is we are tremendous fiscal impact in terms of what the tax revenue is from our facility to the cost of the community in terms of the services and the impacts on schools. And lastly, I mentioned it before, but it does allow active tenants to stay in the community and continue to participate in local commerce. So it does keep seniors in the community, people who, again, as I described, they may have, their current housing option isn't fitting their needs, but this will allow them to stay in town and not find an alternative housing type in some other community. So again, the low impact on schools and existing infrastructure. So with that, I hope I gave you a decent explanation in terms of what it is we're proposing here. And I am able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Brad. Usually, in a conceptual presentation like this, a pre-submission hearing, there's some things that the applicant's particularly interested in having the board provide some feedback on. Are there any items like that that you've got in mind today?
Yes, there are. And thank you for asking, Mr. Chairman. And they're probably best stated in Tim Thompson's staff report on the second page, the recommendations he made. He kind of ties into what we're interested in your thoughts are. The, as Chris noted, it's independent living, so it doesn't fall within the assisted living definition into the zoning ordinance. And as a result, as you know, in the assisted living communities, you don't have a density requirement. There is no density min and max. But for independent living, which this would qualify for, even though there's a variety of onsite services that are, and opportunities provided, the density requirements would apply. So very fundamentally, the core question is whether the board feels that an 111-unit facility on these four acres in place of the 74-bed assisted living proposal is viable. Because to get there, you would have to exercise the authority, as Tim notes in his memo, to modify dimensional requirements to permit the density that's contemplated by 111 units on this four-acre site. So that's one core question. And it's probably the, I think, as time would play out, I think we would demonstrate in the detailing of update to the fiscal impact study that just as the assisted living proposal had a positive fiscal impact, I think this will demonstrate the same. Steve Purna, our traffic consultant, has already made a little preliminary look at traffic impact and his conclusion was that when he analyzed the peak PM hour, there is, there's net increase in traffic generation from 16 to 28 trips, but he frankly reduces that down to new external trips versus internal and comes to the conclusion that the change in traffic from the 74-bed assisted living to 111-unit community that Chris noted is inconsequential. So I think that would play itself out as well. So the key, really the primary question is, does this, is this appropriate replacement for the assisted living component that we propose? What, interesting your thoughts, obviously. What caught our mind and attention was that I've done a lot of 55- and 62-year-old communities. I also did the permitting for a continuing care retirement community, the Huntington and Nashua off Exit 1. And frankly, I hadn't seen until I first met Chris, a product, I hate that word, but a product that was neither assisted living nor continuing care nor nursing home, but it met a niche in the marketplace, which is people who want to live in their own unit, live in their own place, don't want to own a home anymore, but want to have a facility that's got a lot of in-house stuff, in-house activity capability, socializing as well, and yet not be in the, you know, the independent wing of an assisted living facility that's $3,000, $4,000, and $5,000 a month. It was a market niche that they obviously noted. So we think that from an operational perspective, it's not significantly different from the assisted living proposal, from sort of the outside world's perspective because you have a kind of contained community. The people are, the demographics and their usage are gonna mostly be there rather than creating lots of traffic, lots of additional outside usage, but still be active in the community at the same time. So that's really the key, I think, Mr. Chairman, the board's perception of this in place of the assisted living, the density issue.
Thank you, Brad. Let me offer my compliments. I think your, the drawings and the pictures and the plans you draw are beautiful. I think it looks like a great-looking facility.
Thank you.
It really is attractive. It's well-designed with some of the amenities you have for the residents that are gonna live there. In terms of the density, sort of get some input from all the board members, but my own two cents is that 37 additional units from the 74 originally in this age group and for this function probably doesn't mean a whole lot in terms of its impact on the property or the density that comes from the people. You're still in water and sewer, so there's no issues with that. The only potential density kind of a concept that I see with this is that you got about another acre of impermeable surface on the site. And obviously, managing that groundwater, rainwater, stormwater runoff and getting some landscaping around there, perhaps maybe developing the parking in a way that allows you to build some portion of it in the beginning and build the rest if you need it and not if you don't, kind of a thing, might be an approach. But somehow managing that change in impact because you got basically an additional acre of coverage. And I'm eager to hear what my other board members think, and they may offer some things that I wasn't thinking of before, but other than that, I think it's a pretty neat proposal. I would tend to support it. Are there other members of the board who wish to offer?
Well, Mr. Chairman, may I start speaking as a 72-year-old who works full-time? The first question I've got is, in your other communities, how much public transport is available to residents? Because I personally would find that the three to five car trips a week is, I would have thought, way, way under what's gonna happen in Merrimack. We don't have public transport. I mean, I know we're gonna get into phasing again, but given that you're talking about building all this housing before you build, and this is more Brad rather than you, Chris, when, if somebody, if these people move in, and welcome to them and it looks beautiful, and maybe I'll think about it as a 72-year-old, but where are they going shopping? There's nowhere near unless you're gonna get a good store there. Everybody's gonna have to go some distance to get food because they're self-catering. They're not getting any food from anywhere else. I think your three to five times a week is way under. I mean, I don't think there are many 72-year-olds in Merrimack who use the car three times a week. I really don't. I would knock that. Maybe in your other communities, you've got public transport. We ain't got none here, nor likely to ever have any.
Hang on a second. Well, let's, oh, same as you. Okay, go ahead.
My mother and father lived in another state, in a community like that, and they had bus service. A bus took them to the supermarket every week and they got back on. They had an hour, two hours. Also...
You mean a bus provided by the community, not a public bus? Gotcha.
Because they get a concierge service and they're making arrangements for medical and whatever. I can see that. Also, my wife worked in a nursing home as a social service director, and they had assisted living. And that's the amount of trips that generally the people made every week. They had cars. They had a parking space. They didn't go out that often. So I just wanted...
Thank you, Stan. Brad or Chris, do you want to weigh in on the estimated number of car trips?
Sure. I would say that on our communities, not every single one has a public transportation component. Most municipalities that we've built in does have a dial-a-ride program where the community can call a bus or there are two or three buses that are owned by the senior organization in that municipality. And then our community, once it's built, gets put on that route. But there are other communities that there is no public transportation available and we don't rely on that. So where public transportation is important, we tend to get an older demographic that relies on it. When we don't have it offered, you know, it does affect a little bit in terms of who rents in our community.
Well, it's not so much that whether you do it or not. What I'm getting at is if you're, when the traffic consultant factors this in, and it's great, I think the three to five trips isn't something he should be factoring in at three to five. I would like him factoring in at a much higher level. Don't say it's gonna make any difference, but it's certainly gonna make a considerable change between what Chris is offering, which looks beautiful, compared with the assisting living thing that was what was the original intent.
So there may be more vehicle trips than the three to five?
Many more vehicles.
Yeah, and again, don't let my PowerPoint presentation, what I'm saying is what we find is average. I don't think Steve Purna put in three to five trips a week in his analysis.
Okay, fair enough. I just asked the question.
And obviously, we would have to have Steve do the typical IT analysis, what the manuals indicate that are expected trips from this type of facility, et cetera, see how that matches against reality. Yeah, point's well taken.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Tom?
Thank you. I agree that the presentation looked really nice and I think the idea is sound and makes a lot of sense. There is a niche there to serve. What I'm not really seeing is a distinction or a very strong distinction between the current five buildings of multifamily apartments and yours, except that you have some common space and some single concierge per floor or whatever type of things that are fairly minor things. If you took a couple of these buildings and the clubhouse and put them together, you'd have the same fundamental concept and you just target it to a different market. So we're taking the 150, whatever, 158 or something units and adding 111 to it and putting a tremendous amount of residential into this CUP area where we already have an industrial neighbor who's concerned about too much residential coming in and then turning around six years or three years and saying, "We don't like all the noise that industrial does." And so I'm concerned not only about the potential for increased traffic because you've got people that are vibrant that are out there in the community and active, but also fitting yet again more and more residential into this thing, where the whole idea originally was to come up with a mix of industrial, commercial, and residential in order to make a planned unit that worked together to the benefit of each of the different regions. And now we're just swaying it even further towards the residential and I suspect too far in this case. Where's that dividing line? Where's the balance? I'm not sure. But that 37 units or whatever you're talking about extra might be that tipping point. And I'm concerned that we're seeing, we're building a huge residential region into what used to be a nice big commercial piece of property. We might not be able to find an industrial, excuse me, industrial piece of property. Might not be able to find an industrial use for that whole property and there's some value in the CUP process, but I'm just concerned about the direction that we're going here.
Appreciate that. I wanted to, I think you clarified at the very end, but initially you said 111 new or extra and they had 74 before and so it's not quite that many extra. But at the end, you said 37, so I think you got it and maybe I just misunderstood you.
Yeah, 111 is, those are residential units. They're not assisted living units, right? So now we've taken 158, added 111. They're all residential. The difference between them is very minor in talking about the services that they provide and the concierge and stuff like that. Well, that's a small enhancement, if you will, over these multifamily buildings that are there already.
Sure. No, I take your point exactly. I just wanted to get a sense of what the scope of what was being added. And I had a question for Tim earlier that I asked him, and that was when we were looking at 74 assisted living facility spaces, I was thinking of that as a commercial development, not a residential one, because an assisted living operates like a facility. But Tim was telling me that that's always been in his side of the ledger, looked at as residential in terms of the way that we were mixing the uses, and it was not counting as commercial before. It was 74 residential and now it's a little bit more than that in his mouth. But yeah, I was thinking of it because it's a facility, it's admitted to and all that, so. Yep. Mike, yep?
I support some of Tom's concerns, certainly. But one thing I like about the change potentially is that it supports the growth for the other stores. So when you've got an active community like that that's looking to provide for themselves, they'll be reaching out to these stores and hopefully that, as we've seen with other CUPs, drives some of that development. And then Bob, I also support your concept of any chance that we can minimize the runoff and do something here from a low-impact development solution, I think. and do something here from a low-impact development solution, I think would be a great, great idea.
Thank you, Mike. Nelson?
Yeah, Bob, I also second what Tom has said very well. I think that's a real concern that we're packing a lot of residential into here. On the other hand, it's a nice use from the point of view of the elderly, which I have to count myself. The other thing I wanted to ask about, and it's probably a little off the track here where we're talking right now, was the architectural blend here. Is these going to look, this is a four-story building as opposed to the three-story one you showed in the picture. And the others are all three stories, and I wonder how this, if there's going to be some blending of architectures? Because I think we talked about that before, when you come to actual site plan, if these are going to be standalone, different-looking things, or if they're going to look like they're part of the same area, same overall.
Brad, you were here before, but Chris, this is new to you. When we do this conditional use permit, master planning this whole site, part of what we're looking for is for it to look like it was master planned. So you fit in with what's going on with the other elements of it, and that's what Nelson's driving at. Since this is your first time with us, and Brad's the one that's been here before, I thought I'd give a little bit more explanation for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Stan?
I got a few questions. I like the whole idea. I live in, I live in over fifty-five development, seventy-five standalone units, and twenty-four apartments in one building. The space for the standalone units are approximately two thousand square feet. A first floor and a loft. You can live just on the first floor. I can speak to say, I like your idea because we have some people that the two thousand, even though they don't do shoveling or cut grass, was just too big to maintain, and they moved into the apartment, which is around a thousand. They still wanted to be on their own, and so that's what they did. But I do have a concern. When you said independent living, and I thought that was nice, but you don't have an age group that you're targeting into. In other words, a mother and father move in, two bedrooms, say, and then their kids. The son and daughter divorce, and she moves in with her three kids. Now you've got six people in a thousand square feet, which isn't reasonable. So can anything be done to stop that? And you're talking the average age of seventy-two, and if you have kids running up and down the hallways, it's kind of disturbing.
Sure. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, to comply with Federal Fair Housing Act, we've agreed to the fifty-five and over restriction, and we've also agreed to the sixty-two and over restriction, which limits occupants. And it's a declaration of restrictive covenants that goes on the land records.
The, I guess, I learned myself that when you put up a building or come before the planning board, if you want to restrict it on age and children, it has to be in the initial documents. And there's only one development so far, and it hasn't been built, that has said no children under eighteen can be living there. So I was just wondering what you would do or how would you protect? If you didn't put that in, how would you protect the residents that are there? I have friends in Hudson that they have an assisted living, and they have that exact problem. There's no way they can stop over fifty-five, but they could stop the daughter with three children from coming in.
So Chris, you're saying in your documents, you're going to require sixty-two-years-old and older for a hundred percent of the residents? No exceptions?
Well, and if somebody brought their children in, their daughter and grandchildren, you won't have anything that deals with the children in your documents or that age. It would have to be put in right before us. That's all I'm pointing to.
For example, in Londonderry, the town attorney is reviewing that exact topic in terms of the limitations of occupancy, and that is going to get recorded prior to construction.
Because it's the YMCA property that I was referring to that has it in their documents.
Bernie, say the place.
One other one, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Are there any, the drawing isn't big enough to help me really, but are there plans to put sidewalks? Because my view is, given no buses and you don't want people to drive really, I would have thought the pressure would be to try and let people walk across the road to the Harris Pond development, which might, it might revitalize Harris Pond because somebody could see there's all these nice people who are going to want to buy groceries. Are you putting any sidewalks in?
That I can't answer. I'm looking to Bernie as to whether it's even been thought about at this point, to Bernie plan one of the...
It's probably too early, Bernie, but I'm asking the question.
But I will tell you that there is a crossing at the signal, pedestrian crossing.
That's not what I meant. I'm assuming these people from this nice four-story elderly housing unit, there's a hundred and eleven units, possibly a hundred and fifty people, might want to walk across. Remember, we're talking, when Tom was doing his maths, it was a hundred and eleven units. It isn't a hundred and eleven people, so, because you can get, some of them are going to be two bedrooms. So we could be talking about rather more than a hundred and eleven people. How are they going to walk across to Harris Pond to get their groceries?
There'll be, there will be sidewalks along that entry road.
There are?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, folks.
I have one more question that depended on size.
Okay, let him have it.
As Tom was talking about, it's almost the same type of thing. I was just wondering, what size square footage was the residential part of the development going to be? Is it still a thousand feet, square feet, or the apartment going to be larger?
If I remember Chris's, on Chris's PowerPoint, if that's who you're referring to, you were on the...
Yeah, I know what, I know what Chris is, eight sixty-five to ten seventy-five. And I said a lot of my questions before, but I'm wondering the...
And the other multifamilies?
Yes, what the size is.
The mix of sizes.
I think they're running...
Got to get to a microphone if you want to. Sorry to interrupt you like that.
They're running seven fifty to thirteen hundred feet.
Okay, because I was hoping there'd be more of a difference in there, so it would be separate.
Between seven and thirteen is quite a difference.
Yeah.
Well, eight sixty-five and ten seventy-five and thirteen, is it?
There isn't.
So that's all I'm seeing. Is there not much of a difference between the two different groups?
I think there is. Other comments or questions?
I hadn't talked about it earlier, but I'm taken back by the four-story building along the length of DW Highway, right up against the edge of it there, and what it's going to look like. And so I'm concerned about that. The other building's three stories higher down the hill by the river and wouldn't be seen and wouldn't be obtrusive, that that big, long building is going to be a wall of windows or whatever, driving along the side of the highway where everything else is further back or further down. And it's just, it seems a little bit much for that concentration area. I mean, when you, again, taking into account all the residential going in there, it seems like a lot of effort to put a whole lot of residential on a very small footprint. And there may be value to that, but all the pictures you showed were three stories, and now you're talking about four stories, and I don't know how that all plays together well.
Other comments or questions? I like the design of the building. I like that you put the building facing the road and not the parking lot facing the road, so as you go by it, you're not looking at an asphalt football field there, waiting for cars to come park in it. I think that's a little better. But separate from that, I think, I want to comment a little bit. I'm glad to see an actual applicant with a specific proposal come forward because as you came forward with the conditional use permit, except for the residential, all of the other development was kind of a little nebulous because you didn't know who the developer might be and come forward. And because of that, as, and you know this from our own conversations, there's some doubt about whether certain parts of the development will actually materialize and then somebody will actually want to come build some element of it. And of all of the elements in your proposal, the assisted living was the one that I was the most concerned about, whether it would actually ever come to pass. And so I'm really pleased that you do have a specific proposal, a specific developer for that. And I think the idea that this kind, that this piece of the project would be on the sooner side of things rather than the later side is kind of exciting. I'm pleased to see that as a part of the development. Whether the building is adjusted in its position or something like that to kind of belay some of the other concerns and we deal with some low-impact development or whatever, I think are all manageable in site plan level reviews, in my opinion. Other thoughts, comments? Nelson, you're the historian in this group. Is this an occasion where we would take public comment? Or is this in a preliminary, we would not?
I always took public comment.
Why not do it?
When we had a public meeting, yeah.
Are there members of the public who wish to weigh in and provide the board any feedback on this in a conceptual design review? Seeing none? There we go. Done that part. Is there anything, Brad, that you need a firmer opinion of the board on? We don't typically vote on things in this level of review, but if you want to kind of get a consensus of the board on anything specific, please speak up.
Well, obviously, we, if it's, if it has legs, put it that way, has some real viability, that's something we'd like to know because that then gives some direction to Chris and Bernie both as to whether to pursue this in a significant, detailed way with the revised plans, some engineering backup, all of that. Where we hear, we hear a variety of concerns. I'm not so sure any of them are insurmountable, but I hear the, I guess if I had, if I had to worry about it, my worry would be that the notion that a couple of the members of the board have indicated that it's sort of, it's too much residential when you couple it with the one fifty-six units of the apartment side, is that going to be an insurmountable issue? Because we, other than reducing numbers, which cuts into fiscal viability, it kind of is what it is. We can't design around the notion of this is an independent unit complex that's got a lot of in-house capability for the demographic, but it is residential. So I don't know. I don't know if the board has a consensus that the residential is over the top or not, frankly. But I guess that's the key question.
Well, one of the comments, I think Mike made it, that I thought was important, is the idea that having more people living here helps to make the viability of some of the commercial developments maybe a little stronger, where there's a few more customers that might use whatever is built in the commercial end, I thought was pretty significant. But I want you to hear from the other members of the board and see what they think in terms of, like...
Yeah, I made, I made both, I made the comment that I was, had some concern about it, but I think that the concept or the potential of supporting the commercial side, in my opinion, would outweigh. And so that benefit, to me, seems greater, and that's where I would kind of favor.
Any other comments?
The only comment I would make, Mr. Chairman, is, which I think is to some extent probably relevant. If you were able to persuade Nato Comp and everybody else, wherever you go in the courts, to shut up, then maybe you'll get away with it. But I think you're actually giving them ammunition. But if the abuddars can live with it, I think I could live with it, if that helps you. So the best I can say, I mean, I feel we're on, for us to give you a sort of go-ahead, given what you're facing with the abuddars, I think it's a bit premature for us to actually tell you. But that's my personal opinion.
My opinion doesn't change with what the abuddars say, but anybody else have comments or questions?
I think this is a unique opportunity, and it's going to be developed, whether it's here or in another part of town, because it's a niche that isn't here. And I deal and live with the older people all the time. And some of them just need a little guidance with the, if somebody's scheduling their appointments and different things. It'll take, it's a difference that you would have over all the other apartments or condos that people are doing. And I said I downsized, and that's the big word. I went from two thousand square feet to nineteen eighty. I don't see that much of a downsizing. I got a nice big loft. I got an office. I never go up there. So I don't even need to be in the house that size. And it just looks at, and my wife says, gee, it's getting harder and harder. Well, we're not going to move. That means I got to help the economy and get somebody to help her. But, maybe me. But I just think it's, if it can be worked out, it's different than the rest of the apartments that would be built on the other side of the property. The other thing, too, is if it was worked out, we were concerned, and we got the gas station come in with phase one. I would think that this would be right along because it's a different company entity, and that's another big piece of property that might be developed right from the beginning if the site plans are approved. So I'm sort of for it if we can work it out.
Yep. Lynn?
I'm a little concerned with the number of traffic trips. If you were to come in and say that we are going to have bus onsite, so the facility would provide a bus that would do routine trips of a predictable nature, that would eliminate a lot of the traffic that I think this is going to generate and will relieve that traffic intersection as well. So I would encourage you to reconsider your no-bus-on-the-facility to consider having that done. I think that would, that would enhance it. Because I know a lot of them would love to just hop on the bus and go to Shaw's and come back, then take their own cars.
I agree with that.
The experience was that sometimes the shopping center will hire a bus to go to a nursing home where they get all the business. So it's helping them and the stores there. It wasn't, it isn't supplied necessarily by the developer.
They'll go talk to Shaw's. I'd like to see that as part of it.
Yeah, it would be great if there was some transportation that's available in some kind of a shuttle van, bus kind of...
Well, they have built the bus station at the outlet mall, but nobody's, no buses go there, but it's ready for them.
No, but I've heard the discussion between the Nashville and the Manchester bus companies and the reasons why they don't go there, and it's pretty compelling. Cost a fortune, and nobody wants to ride it. Other comments or questions?
No, I'll just, Mr. Chairman, I'll just second what I've heard here tonight. I think, I think there are some concerns with this, but they're not insurmountable. And the need is here, I think, in this area for this type of living. So I'm going against some of the things that I intuitively feel are problems. It would be good if you could support that three to five number of trips per day. I don't know where it came from, but it didn't come from Ashto. And I, I think if you can support that from some of your other businesses, that would make me feel better about it. Also, if you could, if you could, yeah, just support that number and also bring in the fact that whether public transportation is or is not present against those numbers. You know, an average across all your buildings wouldn't answer the question. I'd really like to know the buildings that don't have transportation provided and see how it's going to compare, just to make me feel better about that number and then have paranoid comment on it. I think it'll work, but don't have the numbers in my head to make it happen.
On the drawing, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm, Bob.
On the drawing that you have, that we're looking at, how many parking spaces are drawn around that building?
Hundred and seventy-five. He's got a hundred and fifty-five for the four-story building and twenty garage.
Microphone. Sorry, Bernie. I don't mean to nag you, but folks, I'm going here.
Chris's request was fewer parking spaces than we're showing. That plan is compliant with zoning. I can probably give you a number very quickly. I'll take a look at the drawing.
You've got a hundred and fifty-five plus twenty.
There's another, yes.
But does that include the parking lots around the back and by the road? Because there's...
It does, Mr. Chairman. I counted them.
Okay. Hundred and fifty-five parking spaces for the kind of use that you're talking about certainly seems abundant.
The ratio, actually, Mr. Chairman, I would tell you that the ratio for a hundred and eleven units to a hundred and seventy-five, I did the math, is virtually the same as the thirty-six, the fifty-nine parking spaces. the math, is, is virtually the same as the 36, the 59 parking spaces for each of the 36.
And I don't think that you're going to need that many.
The ratio is about the same. So, I think you're using the town ra, ratios rather than what Chris might need.
That's what Bernie said, he's compliant. Yeah, that's exactly what they said they did. I don't think that they'll need that many, though.
I think Jim Petropoulos, when he put the concept plan together, did it just to be compliant as opposed to what, from Chris's experiences, may be necessary in reality, which may be a smaller number.
Do you happen to know a rule of thumb off the top of your head as to what kind of parking requirements you see in your other facilities?
We've built less than one space per unit in some communities, and we've built upwards to 1.75 to two per unit when the municipality said, this is it. You know, it's two per unit or the project doesn't get approved. But, but you mentioned something, Mr. Chairman, that I've done in another couple of communities, and I commend you for saying that, is, is what I call land banking, land, where you show where future parking could be. You know, so we build, we build what we think we need. Last thing a landlord wants is a lack of parking for the tenants. So, so we'll, we'll build what we think we need, and we'll demonstrate that, you know, if we're wrong and we need more parking, the land is available there to expand the parking to do that. But we're, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of one and a quarter to one and a half per unit is what we think we need.
Thank you for that. Lynn, is there a hand up?
But that, that's my concept of what I'd like to see, because that's going to reduce the pavement, which everybody's concerned with.
Reduces pavement, reduces the size of drainage, reduces runoff.
Right.
It has numerous positive benefits.
Now, you're also in a aqua conservation and flood hazard district, so this is likely to be a limited salt or no-salt use site. Did we put that condition on last time, or did we save that for site plan review?
I don't remember that being there, but it might be. I just wanted to mention one thing about the drainage design. The drainage design will have to accommodate the full build-out of pavement, but the pavement need not be there unless needed. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Excellent point. Stan?
I hate to agree with Alice there, but after, after looking at this, if he's living there, and I thought the original plans had the gas station on the corner, and now you sort of swapped it. So, you need something to walk on.
It's still there.
No, the, the gas station was still staying.
Gas station's in the same place.
It's next to the, next to the, yeah. But the restaurant is further on the corner, that's all.
I got you.
And you need something to walk on.
Yep, some internal connectivity.
Yeah, I think we'll get that when we do the site plans, but that's got to be there just for future planning. Pedestrian-friendly area.
Other comments or questions?
So, so just to summarize, I feel like this is a little bit too much residential usage. As you said, Chairman Best, that I hadn't really considered the assisted living as residential before, which was probably a mistake on my part. But we're going, you're talking about 267 units of residential in here, which I think is, is too much for the size of the property. It's already lower than the, than the acreage we originally had planned to offer for CUPs, because you've got a variance or whatever to, an adjustment to be able to work on a smaller lot. You've got, in my opinion, a large residential component in there and relatively small commercial and retail components in it. So, we're not seeing as much of the mixed use as was originally envisioned when I was on the board and we set up the concept of the CUPs. If you took out some of the residential you were doing there and put this in there in its place and said this whole combined thing of 200 residential units was, was what we're building, that might sit a lot better with me than what we have here. I, I think we're just expanding well beyond 50% in residential, and I think it's, I think it's going overboard. I do like the concept, I think it is a niche market, I think it's very well thought out. I have no problem with that, but I just, I think we're, we're just putting too much in there.
I think, if I have the last comment, I don't know if I do or not, but one of the things that affects my thinking about this is we looked at the walkability and pedestrian and bicycle stuff for master planning and for other stuff. All of the concepts behind that say that you got to build in a compact footprint to have it be a walkable community, so it doesn't have to, people don't have to cross a mile and a half to get to the next thing over. And that's affecting my thinking a little bit, and I know it doesn't necessarily resolve the issues that Tom's after, but that's part of what's on my mind. With that, if you need more from us in terms of feedback, please say so, and if not, thank you for...
Keep going.
We appreciate it. We have a lot to digest as it is, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate the presentation, and I hope that it's something that you guys want to move forward with and bring back in a more finished way. With that, we are on to item number four on our agenda, which is John J. Flatley Company as the applicant and owner and its review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a conditional use permit to permit a future mixed-use development consisting of industrial, multifamily, residential, commercial, restaurant, and retail uses. The parcels are located at 645, 673, 685, 703, and 707 DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquar Conservation, and Wellhead Protection Districts. Tax map 6E, Lot 31, 33, 34, 35, and 36. The item is continued from the July 22nd, 2014, August 5th, 2014, September 9th, 2014, and September 23rd, 2014, planning board meetings. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
They have revised the master site development plan in response to comments from the board and abutters made at the previous public hearing, so they'd like to go over the changes that were made. And we've also received comments from CLD on the traffic impact study, so that should be a part of discussion as well.
We also have an email, which was sent by an abutter with some comments, which at the appropriate time of the presentation, I'll read into the record for everyone. Please don't let me forget to do that.
I will not let you forget, Mr. Chairman.
And with that, let's hear from the applicant. Don't forget to introduce yourself and sign in and tell us where we're at with the concept.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire. With me tonight is Kevin Walker and Luke Page from the John J. Flatley Company. We are before you this evening seeking a conditional use permit for a mixed-use development consisting of industrial, multifamily, residential, a restaurant, and commercial retail uses. As you may recall, we were last before this board at the August 5th meeting, and at that time or at that meeting, we heard some pretty consistent feedback from the board pertaining to connectivity, low-impact design, the building layout that we were proposing at the time, as well as the parking layouts for the different components of the project. We have spent a considerable amount of time since our last meeting working on conceptual layouts for this development, and I believe that the plan that we have before you this evening is, is a substantial improvement, addressing many of the concerns from the staff memo dated July 29th and also from the meeting on August 5th. We have submitted the revised master plan, as Steph stated, and I think the, the best way to discuss the improvements is maybe just to walk you through the, the plan from left to right. And I'm just going to turn the board around, if I may, Mr. Chairman. We have a blow-up plans on the other side.
Yes, please do.
Taking a look at the residential layout, you'll notice that we've basically completely redesigned the layout to incorporate a number of comments that came from staff and members of this board, as well as some of butters at the last hearing. The design has been reconfigured to provide additional green space around the buildings. What we've basically done is, is repositioned the buildings along the perimeter of the parking. If you may recall from our previous plan and proposal, we had kind of the, the parking surrounding the buildings, so there was less green space around the buildings themselves. And there was at least a couple comments pertaining to the lack of green area around the building and, and the dislike of the layout pre, that we were previously proposing. The other thing that this layout allows or improves is the traffic circulation through the project, as well as the connectivity from both a vehicular and pedestrian aspect. Just taking a look, we did add a connection to the commercial area to the north. That was certainly something that we, we felt some comments on at the last meeting. We did locate that access to the rear of the commercial property due, due in large part to the concerns that our client has pertaining to attracting traffic from the commercial use into a residential community. That's a, that's a large concern that our client has, but in the interest of, of taking or trying to address a connectivity concern, we, we have tried to incorporate that into this layout.
Could you show that, please? I just couldn't...
Yeah, it's located right here.
Oh, that one? Okay, okay.
The other pedestrian connectivity aspect is we are showing a sidewalk along Daniel Webster Highway here, which will come internally to the site. Ultimately, will service all of the buildings, but also will tie into the commercial properties and start the internal sidewalk network that was discussed at the last meeting. And I'll, I'll show how that connects throughout the project. We also provide a trail system along the perimeter of the project, which we did propose previously, but we're, we're depicting it now a little bit more accurately. Ultimately, it will make its way over to two existing ponds, and there'll be a, kind of a seating in a pocket park type of a, a setting in that area with a gazebo and, and an area that, that people can, can sit and observe. There will, there will also be a seating area located down near the, the existing hatchery as well. I think there was certainly some comments pertaining to trying to incorporate that into this design. This plan does still satisfy all of the parking requirements. What we, what we have done is the previous proposal accounted for a two-bedroom design for each unit. So, there was, there was a substantial amount of extra parking once we took into account the breakdown per building for one-bedroom and two-bedroom. So, we were able to reduce the, the parking quite a bit, and as a result, we ended out in, in a larger amount of green space. What this layout also has allowed us to do is to place more open space area towards the back of the project. If you may recall, the previous layout extended quite a bit further down the site, actually extended beyond this paper into the lower portion closer to the power line and the railroad, which abuts the property to the, to the east. The new layout will also allow us to better address the design elements, which we hope to get into during the site review process, but mainly the low-impact design features. By having, you know, larger landscaped areas kind of internal on the parking area, we can incorporate bio-retention basins or rain gardens in, in many of these large landscaped areas, you know, in, interior. So, you would, you would basically have a parking lot that would sheet flow to a, a central landscaped area, so the drainage becomes more of a landscaped feature instead of men and eyes or for, for the property. And depending on, you know, how the calculations end out, you know, we may introduce some pervious pavements as, as well. If not in the residential, then certainly in, in other areas of the development.
Quickly, what about for the rooftops? Do you plan to try to infiltrate any of those?
We, we would typically try to infiltrate rooftops because the, being a residential property, we don't have to pretreat the rooftops, so we try to isolate that drainage in, in most of our designs, especially on a site like this where the soils are so conducive to infiltration, and do more localized infiltration instead of doing a large system somewhere on the site. So, we may, may incorporate recharge systems behind each unit. We, we've done that on other sites quite, quite frequently. In addition to all of those modifications, one, one comment that came up at the last hearing pertained to the geometry of the lot that we were proposing for the residential development. You may recall that it kind of wrapped around the backside of the commercial, the big box commercial piece, and, and captured that pond area in order to satisfy an, an area requirement, which is a function of the density calculation per the planned unit development regulations. We have, at the, at the board's suggestion, we have revised that lot line, making it, you know, somewhat more standard. It doesn't show up real well here, but the, the boundary line would run basically east to west, right along here, which would be a clean divide between the commercial and, and residential. That would require a waiver from the planning board, because the new residential parcel would be 31.3 acres instead of the required, I think, I believe the requirement was around 37 acres. So, we would need a waiver for that in order to have the geometry revised. And it's my understanding from the last meeting that there was some testimony that at least a couple of the board members would support that waiver. There was some statements pertaining to the fact that the density appeared to be reasonable for the area that we're placing it on. The one thing that I, that I would like to point out with this development is we are still showing all of the parking that is required per the ordinance, which still does exceed what we believe to be required based on the number of residential properties that it, that the John J. Flatley Company does own. So, we would likely request waivers similar to the, the previous presentation. We would bank, you know, or show areas where future parking could be proposed. We designed the drainage system to accommodate that future parking, but ultimately, that would just improve the, the internal setting of the project if it's not in fact a need, and, you know, would, would allow for more, even more green space. We are showing conceptual landscaping layout on these revised plans, and part of that would consist of constructing a fairly large berm between the two uses just to help provide an additional buffer or, you know, a vertical element between, between the residential and commercial use. We satisfy the buffering requirements either way, but that's something that our client thought would be needed in that location.
How tall would the berm be?
I think currently we're, we're showing a 10, 10-foot berm, and then there would be vegetation on top of it.
Okay, so basically the ground level would be behind the berm, but the higher apartments, the trees would be really the screening?
Yeah. Over time, the screens would, the trees would be, would provide the screening for that particular unit.
Has that curb cut been moved over?
This curb cut has not been moved at all.
Okay, that's what it was on the other plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We've, we've made modifications to other curb cuts, and I'll get to those when we kind of transition through the, through the project. So, that's, that summarizes the, the changes to the residential component of the project. We do have some photo, photos of buildings that are currently constructed in Nashville. It's new construction. We would be looking at building basically the same units on this site. And we can go, go through these now, or...
Your plan says they're four-story buildings.
That's correct.
Those are three.
That's correct.
Okay, so they don't look like that.
This is the four-story model.
Okay.
That's currently built in phase two of the Nashville project. It's, it's essentially the same building with a...
Are some going to be three and some four?
No.
Or are they all going to be four?
They're all four.
Okay.
Were they all four last time you were here?
Yes.
In, in that building there, how many elevators do you have?
There's one elevator per building.
For the whole thing?
For the whole, yeah, there's two stairwells plus the one center elevator.
Okay.
Chad, can you use your laser to lead me around the sidewalk from the...
Chad, can you use your laser to lead me around the sidewalk from the restaurant? Not your restaurant, the one that's already there. Yeah, into your site and across it?
I don't believe that there is currently a sidewalk on, on Daniel Webster Highway to the homestead. So what we've done is we've, we're, we're constructing a sidewalk from here and then it would come internal down to the clubhouse. It would actually parallel this road and ultimately tie, I mean, each one of these buildings will have a walkway on it and there'll be an internal sidewalk system that would connect every single one of the buildings. There would also be a sidewalk that comes across the, the entrance to the residential and ties into the commercial. Someone could come down here and, and get to this commercial building or walk across this walkway here to get to the restaurant over in this location.
Now, the walkways that you've shown as trails are gonna be unpaved or paved or?
That's a, that's a good question.
I think a portion of them will, will be paved. I think it's gonna depend on how each portion of the site plan gets drawn up as we go. I can, I can see that front portion there where Chad's highlighting as being paved so it could connect to basically-
The restaurant.
Can you see that thing for one sec?
Sure.
Thanks. If this is paved here, you know, people could have a straight walk down here. The other option obviously is they could walk down here and, and cut across this way. Based on past conversations with the board and utilizing the internal system, internal walkway system as part of what would be used as a town system, I would envision the, I guess the westerly brown walkway as probably being paved.
Okay. Excuse me, does it, does it go west from, I mean, north from the restaurant? Is there anything going north for, by way of sidewalk pedestrian?
It, it does. I mean, the, I mean, I could flip the plan around and show you the whole.
I just wanna know that it connects, yeah. And if you can show me just where it takes off there.
From the restaurant, it heads east and par, and parallels the parking area and ultimately ties into this, a walkway that, that again parallels the connector road, which was in, is in addition to this plan. If you recall, in the last plan, we did not tie the other commercial portion of the project into, into this one. So that's been-
That was a problem.
Well, that's why it's on this plan. We, we sensed that it may have been a problem.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted him to point it out.
I think, I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on the residential end. Otherwise, it may, may make sense for me just to walk through the project because I think I'll, I'll ultimately-
We do have, we do have some handouts and we would like to look, I know there's some questions about, you know, residential, how it's maintained, basically how the John J. Flatley Company, you know, runs their apartments and how, how it's basically the, the management of it. I don't know if you wanna talk about that now or wait until we're through the whole thing or deal with it now while we're-
Chad, please bring us, keep going through the commercial across the site and then we'll get to that other stuff.
Okay, great. Well, moving on to the, to the commercial aspect of it, the previous plan had the majority of the parking and actually the building as well was pushed forward and closer to Daniel Webster Highway. And what we've done here is we've, we've reconfigured the parking area. Tried to shift some of the parking along the side of the building and also introduced some landscape islands into the parking layout, which will allow us to do some more low-impact design internally. But it, what it really does is it provides a, quite a large buffer from the parking area to the den, to Daniel Webster Highway, which I, I think addresses a number of, of concerns that were, were generated at the previous meeting. The part, the parking lot before actually kind of wrapped around this, this wetland area up here. So if you can imagine, it was, it was, it was forward by, you know, probably eighty to a hundred feet. So there's, there was a substantial revision there. The other thing that we did is we relocated the restaurant pad that was at the very north corner of the property and we pulled it down and, and inserted it into this end of the commercial development. There was a, a retail pad site that we're proposing here and we basically switched locations with the, with the restaurant pad as, as far as that goes. And what that allowed us to do is to relocate the main entrance to the project. That was a concern that one of the abutters had at the last meeting. I believe the previous entrance actually was situated across the street from a residential dwelling. What we've done is we've situated directly across the road is actually a common entrance between two commercial properties. So it's a much, much better location and, you know, all the site distances and everything that are required would, would still be satisfied in that location as well.
Can I interrupt for just a quick question? Because you're talking about which commercial properties are you lining it up with? I was trying to track it down for that, which-
There's an oil company and landscaping, I think, isn't it?
That's correct.
Is it the depot?
It's the oil company and the landscaping company.
It's a little south of the depot.
Okay, thank you.
Does your total parking take into consideration the possible big box store and the restaurant? Because it's shared park, right?
Yes.
But I wanna make sure the two thousand square feet was added in there, that's all.
Yes, all of the parking shown on the plan satisfies the, it actually exceeds the requirements. We typically try to exceed the requirements by a handful of spaces anyways because we're not really contemplating handicap parking at, at this level as far as the details, from the detail standpoint. So you're gonna lose, lose five to ten spaces anyways when you, when you generate that layout. But certainly, all, the intention is to meet the regulations on, on the commercial aspects pertaining to part, to the parking. The other large revision that we made to the commercial aspect is we've, we've added an interconnection here, which will tie into the other portion of the property that's commercial. And I'm just gonna flip the, the page over so that I can- Taking a look at this plan, you'll see the, the interconnect comes in here. And we've broken the buildings down into, you know, potential users ranging from, I believe it's seventeen hundred square feet to twenty thousand square feet. Pretty consistent with other commercial buildings that John J. Flatley Company has. So, and, and we've really reworked this portion of the commercial project on a, a great deal to address a number of comments that the board raised, mainly connectivity from a pedestrian standpoint and also trying to group and, and offer shared parking instead of having individual parking lots for each building that we're proposing, which is what our, our previous plan was, was showing. This, this layout, I think, accomplishes a, a number of elements. Number one, the buildings are offering a, a pretty nice buffer to Daniel Webster Highway and kind of, in capturing the parking internally. There's a nice pedestrian connection between all buildings. We do have one on the interior here. But there is, just to touch on Mr. Disco's question, the sidewalk will parallel this through road the whole way and then cross over, ultimately run through these commercial buildings here and then tie back into Daniel Webster Highway, run along the highway all the way to the end of the property here. And then we'll have a pedestrian connection here. I, I suspect this would probably be pavement as well. It's shown brown on this plan, but it would likely be pavement. The, this layout, I believe, is, is certainly addresses a number of elements, not just the connectivity, but it, it's a, it's a nice, safe layout because it disconnects the through road element of the, of the proposal. There will be no parking off of the through road, so this is, this is really an isolated area. So any traffic internal on the parking lot will, will be people looking for a parking space or exiting, you know, a, a shopping center or a store or whatever it may be. So I, I think that we, we definitely took, took in, you know, there was, there was a lot of feedback that we received at the last meeting. We tried to incorporate all of it into the plan. We do note on here all the parking requirements and spaces that we're providing, just showing that we are meeting the regulations. And, you know, again, just the, the layout and the landscaping plan for this portion of the commercial as well as the other, provides for a large interior landscape islands where we're really gonna plan on utilizing the, the soils on site and trying to do, you know, mix the drainage, bioretention, infiltration in with landscaping plan. So I think everything will fit in quite nicely once we, once we get to that stage. We did not change this entrance. This entrance is lined up right across the road from what I believe is a condo development. So it's a, a good location for, for the entrance. And then there's the commercial and industrial parcel, which would consist of twelve point three acres. The previous plan showed the restaurant in this location here. And what we've done, like I said before, is we've basically swapped the restaurant with a residential pad site. And so we're showing twenty thousand square feet of retail, excuse me, not residential, of retail pad in that location. And we've reconfigured the parking in this area. Before, the High Bay Industrial Building had some parking located out in, in the front. And what we've done is we've resituated the building and put the majority of the parking required for that building along the front of the building, which has allowed us to increase the buffer and landscaping elements to the Daniel Webster Highway. And that's the same through here. In this area here before, we, we had some buildings. The buildings were, were sprawled a little more and that, that was a concern with, with the connect, the connectivity element because we were having individual parking lots, so it took up more space. So in, all in all, this layout provides a significant amount, more amount of open and green space. I think it consolidates the, the development in, 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 you know, fewer areas, if you will. And, you know, we believe addresses in large part all of the concerns that were raised in the July twenty-ninth staff memo and hopefully the concerns that were raised by the board at the August fifth meeting. So we're certainly interested in, in receiving some feedback on this new plan. We do have, as Mr. Walker said, we do have photos and we'd be happy to talk about certain elements of the plan and try to answer any questions that you may have.
Chad, thank you very much for the presentation and thank you very much for all of the work that went into the revisions between the last time we saw this and this time. My compliments, I think that you've gone a long way towards achieving a lot of the things that we talked about in terms of making it in these retail components walkable and connected. I, I don't know how well anybody could fit a big box in, but you've done, I think, a, a pretty good job of getting the sidewalks around it and connected to the restaurant. And I'm real pleased with the changes that you've made. I, I have one question. It seems like the last commercial, the one all the way to the north past the warehouse is kind of off by itself and a little isolated and it seems like it may, that may make it more difficult to find tenants to occupy because it doesn't really have connect, not connectivity, but it doesn't feel like it belongs with the other retail that's there. And either on the southwest side of the commercial before you get to the big box or in that area next to the St. Cobain driveway, I wonder if there might be room to put that retail pad on the other side of St. Cobain's driveway somewhere to keep it kind of clustered with the other commercial? You know, the two areas that I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think you're talking here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one, yeah, the one you just, or somewhere over here.
Right. The, this area over here, we're, we're sort of intentionally not doing anything there because there's still ongoing negotiations with, or discussion anyway, with the FW Web Company and they may very well need some of that area to address some of their drainage concerns. And we've, we've already taken some of that area away in order to accommodate the interconnection, but we, we really wanna be careful about jeopardizing that project. I think, you know, just in talking with staff, that everybody would, would like to see that come if at all possible. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we, we really didn't look or place it here. And then over in this location, Mr. Chairman, we are dealing with, I believe there's a fifty-foot setback off the, off the highway. And in order to kind of orientate this, this through road so it has a nice perpendicular approach to the, the existing access and paved area, there's, there's not a lot of room to accomplish a retail site there.
How about over next to the restaurant or between the big box and the road or something over there? I don't wanna harp on it too much. I mean, it just seems like it's off by itself and would feel more master planned if it was connected to the others.
In this area here, I mean, we, we're trying to be sensitive to this area because there, there seem to be some comments or feedback pertaining to offering, you know, an area for, for people to go to to, to kind of have an attraction on the site. And we, we really tried to be sensitive to this area, not only by not placing buildings, you know, here at this time, but by not cluttering this entrance area too much. We did actually have a, another retail pad kind of tied into the big box, if you will, but that didn't create as favorable of a parking layout, required us to, to really push the parking closer to GW Highway. And, and the same would be the case here. I mean, we may build a very well-fit a building in here, but there's still a parking element that we would have to satisfy, which would require, you know, the parking probably to, to get closer to, to the highway as well.
And with, with the industrial building being where it is, that re, that twenty thousand square foot retail area that's, that's near it may not be entirely retail. We may have, there may be a, you know, a sub, a sub-restaurant or, or something along those lines that would make life easier for people working at the industrial building. If they wanna take a walk to lunch, they can, you know, they can walk and grab a lunch instead of having to walk over and actually have a sit-down at, at a restaurant.
Sure.
You know, a good little takeout place, you know, anything from like a, an AT&T or Sprint-type store, that, that type of thing. And Luke will mention, Luke will talk about it and point some stuff out in a little bit. But in our Nashua development, commercial area, you know, there's a, there's a very, I'll call it successful at this point. It's only been around six months, but every time I go in there, it's packed. Pressed Cafe, they do paninis, it's delicious. I'm kind of getting off point, but among other things, you know, there's all, there's all sorts of stuff that Luke will get into a little bit.
So it being kind of off by itself doesn't present any issues for you guys? You think that's fine or you'd rather have it the other side if there is room for it or?
I, I think it's good there. I think it's, I think it's good strictly because of the industrial building. It'll give somewhere, takeout-wise as opposed to sit-down-wise, you know, a lot of people, you know, only get a half hour, forty-five minutes for lunch. They're not gonna be able to, you know, drive over, sit down, order there. They can go, you know, grab a little takeout or, or, you know. If they need a piece of equipment for their cell phone or something like that, you know, that type of thing.
I think, I think there are, there are users out there who, you know, may wanna be detached and have their own parking lot and may very well take up that whole building. You know, whether it's, you know, a drive, you know, a, a medical complex of some kind, you know, family- you know, family practice, they actually have something similar to that on the site in Nashua. And I think some of the complaints that, that you find in uses like that is, is the neighboring, you know, their lack of control on who their neighbor is. Excuse me. You may, I mean, maybe a pharmacy would, you know, would want to go, and then they, they typically are kind of their own site as well. So I think there are, there's you, you know, we don't have anybody lined up necessarily, but I think that site certainly is, is marketable.
I take your point, I won't fixate on it. Do you guys like it? Desiree?
I, I li, I like what, what you've done with this, the, the changes you've made have addressed a lot of the things that I was looking at. I like the orientation of the apartments now, the multifamily. I like that they're not looking right on each other, you can see them. I like that you've still got a lot of reserved nature around them. So you had other things here. I like the walkability through the site, the trails going all the way around. It works good for people who are living on the site and the connectivity through to the other sites, whether it be paved, I think paving it along that, along the front side would be good, at least for the, the town traffic that's going to come through and visit the site, I think that would be helpful. But having maybe like packed dirt trails on the backside, if you're doing that other section, that, that's great. I like that you, the movement of the, the restaurant, and I, I agree with you with having the, the retail on the other side, it's disconnected, but like I would, I'm personally not concerned if maybe that doesn't end up getting built like while you're, you know, while you're trying to market it, you know, we've got so much of the other stuff going there, it's, it's just additional retail, so, you know, it's, it's great if you see that there's a use for it. Sorry, I'm getting my notes here. Yeah, I guess that's, that's most of what I had. I, I did want to make one comment on here about paying attention to the sidewalk as it relates along the front. I, I like it pulled off of the road and enough so that you actually have to explore the property in order to, to use that sidewalk. It would be nice if in the process of doing this that you could create signage that encouraged people to do so, because they're going to lose sight of the sidewalk and they're going to think it just goes onto your property and not realize that it connects. And then that, into that line of it, it's a very long frontage, the whole property, and you've now, there's a lot more like acre, like linear of, of travel, because the way you've run some of them. So there's a couple opportunities I see where you could connect it and make the route a little bit shorter and direct, like the, connecting the two retails across the, the entryway that separates the two retails. Maybe if you can run it through there instead of running it back down to the street and out and then back up, but just taking a look at a few of those, but I'm, I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Who's next? Nelson, you go.
Okay, okay. I have a question. First of all, I like the sidewalks too, and I like Desiree's comments, so I hope you take those into account as well. I wanted to ask about this road that runs through your property, is that to be a private road? And what about the other roads on the property? Is all of this, all of this is going to be private road?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to get that settled, yeah.
Yeah, we'll be in charge of the maintenance of the whole nine yards.
Pardon?
We'll be in charge of maintaining it, the whole nine yards.
Yeah, yeah. But it'll have to be built to start to, to town standards?
Right, right, yeah.
Yes, understood.
We'd construct it with, with your standards.
Yeah, yeah. Would you build the roads in a phasing sense? Would you build the road system through there first, or would you piecemeal? Maybe I'm getting off the subject of phasing, but something to think about is to, when you put that road in, vis a vis when you build the various components of this development.
I mean, I could, it is, we haven't put a lot of thought into the, to the phasing necessarily at this point, but, I mean, the natural thing would be to build this section, you know, when this gets built, this section, if this gets built, just to kind of offer two ways to come in and out of the, of the property. And I suspect when we meet with the local officials, be it fire or police, that's something that we'll have some dialogue on.
You'll have some ideas on this as well, yeah, yeah. Okay. Pass for now, I'll come back.
Just to, I appreciate the same thing that, that Desiree said about the connectivity trails, I think that's a really important aspect, we talked about that, is this being kind of a destination place, both for folks, the shoppers, but also just from the sense of the community. So I like the idea of having some sort of pocket park, as you described, at the entrance to that one location. But even take that a step further, and, and I like that concept of, of having kind of a stone-packed trail, and have, having little destination spots along that trail, so people could sit and enjoy an ice cream, but maybe there's something there to read, maybe there's a highlight about Merrimack and its history, or, you know, or something else that's landscape architecture-wise intriguing. I think that, that, that having a theme like that throughout the whole area will tie the, the, the project together, and again, make it, make it an enjoyable destination for folks. The only other comment I, I have or question is, when we looked at, I believe it's, we had a site plan that was approved for the, the High Bay unit in the back that I know is now, looked at for something else, but I thought that there was a approved detention basin where that new High Bay place is going.
I think, I think that's actually located in, in this area here.
There was a small little, basically an overflow down in that corner where Chad just had, and there was another detention basin, just go a little left a little bit. It's right in here.
Okay, okay. Because I remember at the time Jim was saying that it would potentially service that lot as well.
Right, yeah.
And I just couldn't recall how far the new proposed limits are, if they're, you know, just making sure there's not encroachment on that.
Right.
That's still a plan.
And that's, that's why this lot line actually doesn't connect all the way down here, because this area here was to be utilized for the, the other proposal as, as well.
The, the big detention basin dumped out, went down to smoke to the little settling area in that northeast corner.
Okay.
So we, we've maintained all that, so.
Okay, the big detention basin is still there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
I regret I wasn't here in April, on August the 5th, because I was three and a half thousand miles away. I am very bothered, as in fact, the chairman will do when he reads the letter from one of the abotters, that you've got three additional curb cuts along here. Given, looking at the before and after, and you've made this very nice link road, which is something I was, would have asked on for, I believe you should certainly cut out that curb cut, I don't think it's necessary. I even wonder if you couldn't be possible to connect, find some better means of making one curb, curb cut for those two. To my mind, traveling that road, having four curb cuts, at least two of them presumably are going to be traffic signaled, which of course is an absolute knife in my heart to hear more traffic signals on that road. I think you're going to disrupt traffic on what is, it definitely become busier, CLD have certainly concerned that it's become busier, because now there's no tolls on Exit 11, I think you'll find the traffic is built up a bit. I'm very concerned that you're sticking more and more traffic signals on that road, and I'm absolutely adamantly against putting traffic signal, the four tra, sets of traffic signals, well, you've got one there already at where St. Cobain comes out. I don't want to see three traffics, new traffic signals, I'd probably buy one, but I wouldn't, I would be adamant against any more than one. And I'd like to see you, that cut, that, that curb cut there, definitely, in my opinion, now you've put a beautiful road at the back, which I think is a wonderful idea, I think you should eliminate that curb cut completely, and then discuss amongst yourselves whether we really need the, the other two. Whether you'll get, I don't know what DOT will do, they're law unto themselves, but I don't want to see all four curb cuts in that road. Otherwise, I think you've made a great improvement from the before into what you've got now, but I really would ask you to consider the curb cut situation.
What are you guys envisioning in terms of signals?
We're only envisioning one additional signal. I mean, we're, we would utilize the existing signal here, but the only, you know, the traffic report is, is obviously in flux, it's being reviewed and revised to address CLD's comments. We, we honestly don't anticipate any change from the revisions, but it needs to happen. So it's, it's, it's in the works, so I don't want to proclaim to be a traffic engineer here by any means, but just to speak to my understanding of, of the way this is, is, is going to end out, the only other traffic signal would be located here, and it's a, completely a function of, of this user.
Which is why I think, say, you can take out that one.
Well, the, the issue is, in a, you know, and maybe the, maybe this town hasn't experienced this, but when you take a look at a site this big, from a marketing standpoint, it's just, it's not possible to build the whole site out at once. So when you start limiting the curb cuts, you're basically creating a larger project. You're requiring somebody to, to construct a lot more work internally, a lot more infrastructure in order to get to the road. Whereas this very well might be the first curb cut that gets built, unfortunately, to service, you know, some commercial space in here. That's, this, this frankly could be the last one, depending on when, when that user, you know, comes, comes on board. And this, I think this ultimately is, is the problem with, you know, the large commercial developments, is it's getting it started. What is the first phase? And I think there needs to be some flexibility as far as, you know, that goes, to allow it to start in a, in a financially responsible manner. I mean, the numbers have to work in order for the development to, to come in. So I think that this curb cut is, is almost the most important one, in, in my opinion, because it's centrally located in the commercial area, in a commercial area where you can market and target as many users, you know, a number of users. And it may only take two or three to trigger one of those buildings being built, but they're not going to want to, you know, traverse this length to get to one building over in here.
No, but they could come in that end and get there.
That's, that's.
You haven't convinced me, I'm sorry. And you won't convince me, because I think if you've got people trying to turn into there on that piece of road, without doing some improvements to the road, which you're obviously not going to be able to do, because I don't think DOT will give it you, I think you've got issues.
Not to, yeah.
Yeah, DOT.
It's under DOT's control.
Yeah. You know, the, I understand what Alistair's saying, and often my own opinion of it, the, the potential for additional traffic lights is the thing that I'm not excited to see. I get the idea that with the big box there, there's really not any choice with that much traffic.
Agreed.
But then, again, like I did with the previous applicant, that piece of your project, that big box, is the one that I have the most doubts about whether it will ever materialize, because I think that's a very difficult commercial property to find a tenant for, to find a use for. Maybe you have one already, I don't know. But fine with me, if it, if that's the piece that doesn't get built, then the traffic light doesn't get built, and there's no signal, problem solved. The unsignalized entrance between the two commercials doesn't bother me that much, because that commercial traffic to those businesses is going to occur at a time of day that's different than the traffic, the heavy traffic pack in the Daniel Webster Highway, which is first thing in the morning, everybody trying to go south to Bedford Road. The intersection, the curb cut that worries me, is that your residential is going to be trying to get out on DW Highway in the peak traffic. The commercial is going to be off-peak to me, it's going to be nine to five, not eight to nine in the morning. That intersection, that curb cut where the apartments lead onto the road, is the one that I think is the source of traffic in, in your design so far.
Yeah.
And it, and it is.
I think we may be getting ahead of ourselves in deciding on lights and things at this point. I think that the warrants will show the need at that time, and the state is going to ultimately approve all of this. And you may have to make some changes in the lanes to make left-turn lanes and so on, and those, again, will all be, have to be approved by the state. That's a state-controlled road.
We, we do anticipate, you know, some, some new turning lanes, basically to keep Daniel Webster free for through traffic, for traffic that wants to continue through. So that was actually part of the, the traffic study. I think once this traffic study is revised, it's probably going to be a couple, three weeks. Then we'll get, get it back to your consultant, and I think at that point we'll have a, a better idea of exactly what's going to be necessary out here, and.
And the real exact part comes when you try and do one of them, and then you look at what the real traffic generators are, and how big they are, what that big box is, what kind of traffic it attracts, so I think.
My anticipation is, there's not going to be another traffic signal out here until the big box is built, if it's ever built. There may be a time we come in for a modification, that we do something similar to what we have in the middle of the property, over on this side. You know, obviously, time will tell as that goes on.
Well, yeah.
I have to agree with.
For, let me lead to a different piece of the conversation with that, because as you may have heard in the Edgebrook Heights presentation before, phasing is a big part of what we're looking at and talking about with these conditional use permits, so that from the beginning to the end, it's a mixed-use development the whole way, which means you got to have some commercial to go with the residential that I'm sure you want to get built as an early part of the process. Now, which one of these commercials you envision sort of being part of that first phase, and where it connects to roadways? Does that restaurant have any viability at all without the big box? Could it exist on its own?
Well, yeah, I mean, the reason, the reason we actually slid it over is we took your comments and, and really, really thought about them, and it made a lot of sense, you know, the people that, that live in the apartments may want to go for a little walk, and if they don't, you know, they can go to Homestead, or, you know, or something could get built right there. And we thought that was a really good idea, especially should a big box get built at some point down the road. That's also somewhere people can leave the big box and make that restaurant a pretty successful location. I, I mean, I'll, I'll let Luke talk about it in a little bit, but the, with the way we, the way it worked in the Nashua development is the apartments were built first to draw commercial and retail businesses, and it worked out pretty well. I believe, and Luke can get into more detail about it, 180 units were up and rented, and soon after that, the, the retail was, you know, flying as far as the leasing goes. And with the exception of one building in the retail that needs to be still constructed, it's booked up, everything's full, everybody's busy. So in that regard, that, that strategy, you know, worked well, really for, for the retail, for the retail folks.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Stan, I'm sorry to cut you off before, I wanted to get back to you.
Well, I just, my only comment was, I was agreeing with Nelson, we don't want to get too far ahead on the curb cuts and the signal lights, because the state is determining almost everything. As they're told us, we can't put a sidewalk on DW Highway, because they might want one or two lanes to expand that. So I think you might, when you're doing a site plan, also have to figure, hey, they might widen that road, two lanes into that proposed development. And so I, I just wanted to say that, it's not really anything. And then naturally, when you do make a site plan, the way I'm looking, I like everything here, except that I figure it's not going to snow on top of this property, because there's no, snow storage areas, and you'd have to figure quite a few of them out there.
The site plan would show that.
The one thing I do want to.
Snow goes everywhere where it's green, yeah.
The one thing. One thing I wanted to ask you to clarify a little bit, is your calculations on parking. I hate to even bring this up, but sometimes they don't understand it. You've got one- and two-bedroom units, and you've got two-bedroom units, though, I'd say there's at least two adults with potential cars there. You could have three. But for that two-bedroom unit, you've got 1.25 parking spaces, and then a half. So you could have three cars very easily in two bedrooms, and only have 1.75 parking space. So you could have three cars very easily in two bedrooms and only have 1.75 parking spaces.
That's incorrect, sir.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Your regulations are 1.25 parking spaces per bedroom plus a half a parking space per unit.
Yeah, per unit, I'm sorry.
Right, so a two-bedroom unit would actually have two and a half parking spaces. Per your regulations, and that's all-
Yeah, the three altogether.
Right. And so your regulations, quite frankly, are the most conservative parking regulations that I've come across in multifamily housing.
If I hear that once again, I shall, yeah.
Don't pave the world.
I have, I'm not finished on that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Stan.
That's okay. Could we look at this, number nine, and sort of explain it to me?
Wait, do I have a comment?
Yeah, it's the general notes.
Sure.
Because you talk about 110 one-bedroom units and 130 two-bedroom units.
That's correct.
So you need, as it says here, I don't know, 1.25 for the 370 bedrooms? And then it says .5 for 240.
That's because that's the number of units.
Right. But if you have two bedrooms, I'm just trying to say, is 1.75 enough parking for a two-bedroom?
No, they're not-
No, he's got three spaces for every two-bedroom unit. Okay?
It breaks it down to bedrooms, so it's, there would be 1.25 twice in a two-bedroom unit. So that's two and a half.
Okay, that's what I just want to be sure, because 1.25 is not enough. Okay, that's all.
Too much.
You can't sneak any little stuff in here, you know. Some of us read everything.
I knew I would have at least one parking question from you this evening.
Well, I just didn't understand the two times 125, as far as that goes.
I wanted to add to Nelson and Stan's comments about DOT and what choices they'll make with the regulation of curb cuts and lights and all of that. But I disagree with the conclusion that it's premature now to take a look at that stuff, because as I think Alistair's pointing to and the neighbors pointing to, if this could lead to the kinds of traffic problems that we're concerned about, then our point of influencing that is to say, maybe there's too much stuff on this site. And although we don't regulate the stoplights and the roads and all that stuff, that is where we have the influence, and now's the time to have that. I don't necessarily, I haven't come to that conclusion that there's too much stuff on the site, but I disagree that we put that off for the DOT to take a look at.
Yeah, I think we can, I think once that traffic report is revised and your consultants had a look at it, I think we'll be able to sit down as we are today and maybe have, maybe we have all our answers based on the review. Hopefully, that's the case, and otherwise, we can, I guess, discuss it next time out.
I mean, the, when I look at this development, and I'm sure I'm looking at it differently than others, but I do think it's important to have a separate entrance to the residential element of the site. If you were a tenant in that complex, I don't think you would want people, you know, coming through or accidentally entering your facility, the place that you live. So there has been, and I think it was pretty obvious in the first meeting that I attended, which was the August 5th meeting, that there really wasn't an interest of even connecting the use to the commercial. But we did feel some pretty good pushback as far as that goes, from an emergency standpoint and obviously from a standpoint of the tenants being able to stay internal and take benefit of the commercial elements. So that curb cut is really strictly for the residential aspect. When you look at the remainder of the development, it's a fair amount of development, and we're proposing two curb cuts. I mean, it's, we're taking benefit of an existing curb cut, you know, being the St. Cobain signalized intersection. But I think Kevin's right, you know, the results of the traffic, revised traffic study may also help in this dialogue and ultimately produce some valuable information.
Could I counter your comment by saying, if you look at the piece on Amherst Street where Target is, you've got Target, Panera Bread, you've got a couple of clothing-type shops, you've then got the postal services depot at the back. They haven't put in all these curb cuts. Then you've got Chili's Restaurants, and you're told, there's far fewer curb cuts. I don't think what they've got at the back with Target and the rest of it.
There's a lot of-
No, you can't get out of them. You've got one by the traffic lights, which is Nimcor Drive. You've got, you can come into Target, you can't get out. You've then got to go all-
Yeah, you can, you can get out.
Not if you want, it depends which way you want to go.
It's a free right.
Right turn only, well, I don't mind right turn only.
Behind the gas station over to Market Basket.
Well, I think you'll find, when you look at what's behind, I think there's a lot more business at the back than you know. And I honestly think, anyway, but I'll resist going any further.
I guess, I know that we're looking at a master plan development. I'm glad that we've got the interconnectivity. If we were looking at a site, that was Lynn, she didn't have hers on. If we were looking at the big-box site, we'd certainly, by itself, with that amount of parcel, we'd put a curb cut there. If we were looking at the eighteen or twenty retail spaces that you've got over there as a separate parcel, we would certainly not tell them they couldn't have a curb cut for that, even at those distances to the other ones. It's the signalized issue that I see, because those lights won't coordinate with each other and you'll end up with the next one turning red just as the one you're at turns green.
Well, that would be coordinated, we'd make sure they were coordinated.
Well, I'm sure you would do your best. I'm not sure the world will cooperate with you.
We've had to do a similar, again, we'd have to do a similar type deal down at the Nashua project that Luke will speak about in a bit. And, you know, the traffic engineers have their own set at this time. And there's always a little bit of adjustment, but at this point, everything seems to be flowing fine.
Sure. I know that it can be done right, and I know that you'll do your best to do it right. There's some other locations in town where we scratch our head with wondering why it isn't accomplished, in spite of everybody's clear observation of what ought to change. And so that's what I foresee, is that there's, that best-laid plans don't always come to pass.
Particularly, as in fact, the connection that you're probably thinking of by Burger King through Greeley Street, we, as the planning board, said we wanted those lights to be all connected, and DOT refused to let it happen. So before you get carried away, you can make it happen. Only if DOT says so, and they refuse to let. Despite the pleas of the VHB's traffic engineer, they wouldn't let those lights be connected. You've got Executive Drive, you've got the- So-
That is the intersection that I was thinking of, and it's a nightmare. I mean, you just go light to light as you go through there.
It's terrible, and we asked for it not to be, but you go.
So, I'm-
But otherwise, I think it's a great improvement, Mr. Chairman. I like the plan much better than I liked the original one, even though I wasn't here to say so.
Tom, what do you got?
Thanks, I just wanted to, I liked the general circulation, and I liked the connectivity to the inside. I appreciate that you put that in there. I'm concerned about the connection behind the big box, because if I go to any other big retail store and try to look at driving behind it, it's not an inviting place to go. I don't see how you're going to get trucks in and out of that big box. What are you going to do for any of that access and still have that passageway be there? So I'd almost like to see the line be separated from that big box, like it is separated from the other retails and the other parking lots, and have an access through there. I can understand the access going through the parking over by the houses, because that is a deterrent for people to go that direction. They should just take the quickest exit out. But for those people in the apartments to get over to the other side of the retail without having to go out on DW Highway, which I think would be a travesty, it just needs to be, I think, a little bit more inviting behind the big-box area there, assuming something were to actually be built, and a little more through. And where that entrance is coming down to the big box, you're going through the parking lot and then coming down to that connector road. And it seems like that ought to be a straight connector to the connections-
You mean the head to them?
Yeah, within that environment, without cutting it through the parking lot, if that were at all possible to do. So that's just some comments about the circulation. I do appreciate that you put it in there and that there's some improvements to it. What I'm curious about, what I'm concerned about, I guess, is with the residential space there. I like the circulation, and taking that residential space as a unit all by itself, it looks really nice, because there's more green space and everything. But now, if I start looking at one of the buildings budding up against that big-box building, and it's a four-story unit looking over that berm at what's probably, excuse my French, a butt-ugly square-box building, it's not impressive. And if you look at the other two down to the east of that, you're looking at two buildings that are looking at what potentially would be something like an FW Web industrial storage facility. I mean, right now, it's a blank space, and it looks really nice having those there. But there's no landscaping behind there, it drops down to that creek. There's nothing to buffer them from an industrial building on the other side.
I'm not sure if the board would be interested in maybe taking a site walk. It's actually very thick through there. We put a lot of thought into where those buildings would go, where would this FW Web building end up being? And actually, the FW Web building is going to end somewhere around where that red spot is. And this is probably close to 400 to 500 feet between the backs of those units and the FW Web building. And a portion of that FW Web land is not going to be cleared. A portion of that is going to remain treed. Plus, obviously, all the dark-green areas here is going to remain wooded. I stood out there in the fall, I stood out there in the summer, and it was kind of a little bit of a concern. Actually, the St. Cobain building was a bit of a concern. And taken up how it would look, that type of thing. So a lot of thought went into that with where the apartment buildings are sited and the amount of tree cover and the depth of the tree cover. A lot of thought has gone into the big box. I'm sure when we come in for the permitting of the big box, we're going to, if and when that ever happens, that part of that presentation is going to be the, basically, how the exterior of that building looks. And I can guarantee you right now on the spot that that side of that building is not going to look like a big box, silver piece of metal or whatever.
The back door where the loading docks are. I hope my colleagues support your invitation to go do a site walk, because I'm interested in doing it. I think it'd be interesting to do.
Sure, absolutely.
The only question is that we would task you with flagging quite a bit of the locations of these buildings, so that when we go out there, we could stand in the corner and say, this is the last residential building, this is the corner of the big box, and that we can find our way. So it puts a little bit of unknownness on you if you want to invite us out there to do it. But I think I would-
I think it's a good idea. I like it when people are able to be out there, take a look, you know, see what's going on and, you know, really get a good visual on it. It sounds to me like the discussion is more the big box and the apartments. Is that the portion that you prefer to be staked or flagged?
Well, it's certainly the point of interest right now, but if I'm going to go out there, I'd walk from end to end.
Check out the whole thing, okay.
It doesn't mean that you got to flag all that other stuff. Maybe we'll talk about it, see what the other members of board think, but I'm out there.
Well, why don't we stake out the restaurant, the big box, and maybe the corners of the apartment buildings?
Plus, I think if you were able to give, perhaps put some markers, I know I'm probably being difficult, that road would be a wonderful place. I mean, if we could sort of walk along a series of that bit of road, and then the bits that my chairman has just added, I think that would be wonderful. And we've got time, and it isn't going to snow till Thanksgiving.
I'm with you on that. The last two years have snowed before Halloween. Yeah, Chad can probably have that stayed tomorrow afternoon.
And then the residential building that's furthest south, you flag that one, obviously, so we can know the one that's closest to Lantern Lane.
Oh, that one.
That one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that we can get a sense, because that's one of the neighbors that we've got a comment. We want to get a sense of what their stuff looks like. When we do these, it ends up being a publicly noticed site walk, so that the neighbors can come to.
And just to touch on that, Mr. Chairman, the buffering, I mean, we're showing that it's, I believe, around 100 feet or close to 100 feet from the property line to the corner of that building. You know, that's the closest we get to any perimeter. And that's, for a natural buffer, that's three times the distance that your regulations require. So I think the buffering, even when you look at, you know, this area here, there's going to be some substantial vegetation that will exist. And I think it's probably, frankly, going to be a lot more buffering than what you would typically see. I mean, a lot of these multifamily buildings end out looking over commercial properties in a lot of settings.
I think it's also a big benefit to you that you put your parking on the other side of the building, so the parking, the lights in the parking don't affect the neighbor that way. If you'd like, have you received a copy of the email that came from Mark DeGrozier?
Yeah, we have.
Okay. Because it's one that was sent to the board, now's a perfectly good time to read it into the record so that everybody's aware of it, and then we can talk about it a little bit. From Mark DeGrozier, Tuesday, October 7th, 2014. It reads, "Good morning, I understand that the proposed Flatley Development in the north end of Merrimack may be on the planning board meeting agenda this evening. Since there's a good chance I'll not be able to attend due to business issues out of town, I wanted to send a note to reiterate some of the concerns I have as an abutter and ask that the developer and planning board consider these issues as the process evolves. As I mentioned a couple of months ago at an earlier planning board meeting, my primary concerns relate to the following areas. My parents, who have lived at 12 Lantern Lane for 48 years, were told by Mr. Flatley, the current owner's father, that any development would recognize a buffer zone of 150 to 200 feet from Lantern Lane property. I would like the current proposal to adhere to this buffer zone to ensure that the quality of life of the long-term residents of Lantern Lane is retained as much as possible. Again, this buffer zone was identified as a commitment by Mr. Flatley. Two, there is a good deal of vegetation brush tree line that now exists along the Lantern Lane property line. I would like to ask that the developer retain this growth within the buffer zone. To increase the effectiveness of the buffer, the last thing I would want to see is construction vehicles removing these trees and vegetation as development begins. Three, as a part of the lighting plan, I'd ask the developer consciously position any lighting so that the illumination is directed away from Lantern Lane property line. Four, the original plans indicated a tremendous amount of parking for the apartment units. I would ask that the developer consider limiting the number of parking spaces where possible. Five, traffic is a major concern on DW Highway near the entrance to Hilton Drive, the Homestead, et cetera. The problem is especially bad during the morning and late afternoon hours. Development, the size of the one being proposed could significantly worsen an already bad situation if not considered properly. I would ask that the developer and planning board give this item significant review. My preference would be that the number of entry-exit points from the proposed development be limited as much as possible, and that any new traffic lights be limited. Where possible, I would recommend that any entry-exit points be positioned as far north toward the St. Cobain area as feasible. I would ask that the planning board and the developer keep these issues and concerns in mind as the proposals are developed and as the process moves forward. If I can answer any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me." So you've had that ahead of time, and it kind of echoes all the things that we've talked about. The reason for bringing it up is that this particular abutter believes that they were given information about a much more substantial buffer. I don't know what they were told. I know what our regulations require, and I think that you've met that, but-
I've never, I've never heard that from Mr. Flatley to this point. And my gut says, and I didn't know his dad, but at the time, you know, this was zoned to be built industrial. I'm not even sure a mixed-use was in effect whenever this discussion was held.
No, it wouldn't have been, because you are industrial-zoned here, but for a conditional use permit, so that's what you're hearing.
Right, but when did the mixed-use regulation come into?
Conditional use permit?
Five years ago, four years ago. Yeah.
Yeah, so this conversation that he must be referring to happened long before the mixed-use came into effect. And from what I know of Mr. Flatley's dad, he was very good with the butters when he was going to build an industrial or a commercial-type use to provide a bigger buffer. We're kind of, we're running into that in Nashua now. But what we're putting here is residential use. We're not putting up a big industrial building, it's residential. And we still plan on exceeding the buffering regulations by, you know, three to four times. So in that regard, I think we're covered.
Plus, of course, our existing lighting regulations insist that there's no light falls away from the site, and I know you'll conform to that.
Right, and we've, again, we've, we've run into a couple of issues down in Nashua, and we've put up light shields.
Yeah.
In areas and it's been problem solved, so.
Well, I don't know what promises were made, and I, the challenge is always when a neighbor believes they're given a number, they're gonna be kind of bound to that number, and they're gonna argue for it. But I do wanna walk, when we walk the site, stand at the corner where that building's gonna be and get a look at what it looks like.
Yep.
You know, if you meet our regulation, I don't know how we would ask you to do more, so.
I need to, I need to invite the abutter that we had the butters meeting with that wanted all the trees cut down to the property line.
Wanted them all cut down?
She wanted, she's gonna cut all the trees down? I'm like, sure.
How about if we don't do that? I know that the staff has recommended that we continue when we're done up with our discussion tonight to get some more information about traffic reports, and you guys have got some information to get. But I wanna make sure we accomplish whatever we need to or whatever we can accomplish while we're here tonight.
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to have Luke speak to you about, you know, the, the commercial development that we have, Tower Commons and the apartments that we have going up in that hour up, and how, how we run them, 'cause I know that was a concern last time of owners throwing apartments up and, and that's it, not doing any work. And this is a perfect example of, of how, you know, John Flatley Company operates. And I guess other than that, after that, if we wanna, meanwhile Luke's speaking, me and Chad can see when this stuff can get staked out or flagged, and maybe we can make a date for a site visit.
And since we've got a couple of folks here watching, we'll open it up for some public testimony, and we'll also have a dialogue so we can give you some feedback on density. I know we've mentioned that before, so let's do that. So.
I'll turn to the floor.
So I do have some, some photos of the property we have down at the, Nashua, for residential and commercial.
Okay, pass them on. Start on the end.
I also brought some brochures as well. Unfortunately, we have seven. So it just goes over, goes over some of our processes that we have for the apartments, guidelines that we, we have. Any resident that applies has to meet certain criteria. We perform a background check on anybody, so criminal backgrounds, as well as a credit check. Landlord references if they rented in the past, as well as income verifications in order to know whether they're able to support the rents at the community or not.
What do your apartments rent for here in Nashua?
They range from 1135 to 1655. And that's a mix of one and two-bedroom apartments.
You don't think that, well, the border on Nashua is, a lot of people wanna just live as close to the border as they can. And that's why I think a lot of your apartment, apartments, so, so, and I, I don't know if we, in Merrimack, although we do have now a, you don't have to pay the toll on exit 12, that makes it a little easier, and you get right on the highway. But I would think it would take a little longer here than it did in Nashua to fill up all the apartments.
Possibly. We have a lot more going in down there at this time. We first started with five buildings, 180 apartments. So it's smaller than what we're proposing to do in the Merrimack location. That property leased up within seven months. The first building opened in May of 2013, the last one in September, and it was 100% occupied at that point. I do understand it is close to the Massachusetts borders, so we, we did pull some people from there. But I think between, you know, where we're located in Merrimack, between Bedford, Manchester, and the Nashua locations, there is the, you know, the residential that support that.
The thing that concerns me is that you heard about Edgeworth Properties, and we got four major developments going in at the same time. And everybody likes to have, live in a new, new building, but, you know, I'm just wondering, and they should be allowed to, and people should build what they want, but I'm just concerned about overkill on all the apartments in, in town. We're talking maybe 600 new apartments or more, so it's light.
Yeah, I just have one comment. I'm glad you showed us some of this architecture, and I think one of the things I was interested in is getting the architecture of this place to look like a place, all of it, you know. But I wanna point out this little Tower Commons. I happened to go on Spitbrook Road today. I hadn't been there in two or three years, and this thing jumped out at me. It's gorgeous. I just hope that you've got something like that in mind for what goes along Route 3, because it really looks good. Now, this is, of course, facing it, and it's got the parking in front, which we're talking about a little different, but having that kind of a townscape, if you will, visible from the road is, is, is really good, really good. I hope you do it.
Just curious, you know, you talked about how you, you build the residential and then that drives the commercial. Are you finding that because of the, the price point, and I think you've alluded to this in the past, that there's certain interests in that type of resident or, you know, the people that you're attracting? I guess what my, my question is, is that what do you see kind of the theme or the elements of this, of this development that might be similar or different based upon the demographics in the, you know, the area of Merrimack?
I can't gauge what the, the price point should be, of course, on a future development. What we've done in the past is we've, we've based it on the competitors in the, in the market. You know, the other communities that are already in the area, as well as the industries in the area. So it may be something we, we look at price points based on what's currently in the Merrimack area to kind of gauge off of that.
And this, this development too, not only, not only the residential, but really the overall development, not, not that I really think this is a, that the board really, really cares about what I'm about to say, but the, 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 the cost of actually doing the construction on this site is gonna be remarkably less than what we had to deal with in Nashua. Nashua, we had ledge, two feet on every inch of the site. There was a lot of blasting. There was a lot of de-watering. And again, you can see how beautiful it still turned out. So I think that will help cost-wise as far as the cost of building, building the buildings, as well as the subsequent rents and leases.
I guess I'm, I'm kinda curious is that are we gonna see, you know, do you think that it's gonna, that you're creating kind of a theme that's gonna be replicated? In other words, do we, do we see a yogurt place? Do we see this? Do we see that? You see everywhere else, you know, or do you see this being something different? And, or is, is the clientele that you're servicing in the residential community looking for something unique? And that's what you're gonna be offering with this, with this development? I guess, is, is there anything different there that I can expect?
It's tough to say what kind of industries, of course, will, will be drawn to the area, I think. I mean, we, we do focus on businesses that will impact the residents, of course, 'cause that's one of the major points of it. It's the proximity of it's close, so we're looking for something of convenience, I guess you would say, for the residents plus the surrounding area. Such as, you know, we have a convenience, Spitbrook Market's a convenience store. So if you wanna pick up, you know, like a milk, some bread, bag of chips, those kind of things. You know, cafes, so a place to stop. The cafe is one of the most popular places, breakfast, lunch, it's, it's packed, it's one of the, and so. Down at the Nashua location is also healthcare dentists, so it's, it's businesses that, you know, impact the people that live around it.
You describe that, though, I don't hear kind of chains. I hear more either small or local chains that are being drawn to these types of establishments and not necessarily your, your yogurts places or that sort of thing.
That's what we pulled in, into the Nashua area, is more of the, yeah, the, the smaller location. Elizabeth Grady, you know, is one of the salons that's there. It's one of the larger, you know, that's down in that area. Other than that, it is, yes, local, local shops and, and retail locations.
There, there was discussion during the permitting process of what's now the Press Cafe of being a Dunkin' Donuts at that point. The traffic on Spitbrook and what they anticipated as possible backups in the development itself made us turn away from that. We're open to it, you know, i- if, if things will work, you know, we're, we're obviously willing, willing to use them. And I think what we discussed before, you know, and it was mentioned here, just the, the look of this development, it's probably gonna be pretty similar in, in a lot of ways with what we intend on happening out on DW Highway. So you're not gonna see a big pink Dunkin' Donuts. If Dunkin' Donuts is gonna come in, they're gonna be in, you know, this type of, this type of building. You know, they can have their sign the whole nine yards, but, you know, it's, we're not gonna have a big pink building and a big, you know, Target bullseye somewhere else. You know, we're gonna try to keep this, as was mentioned, the, the last time we were here, is more of a, a community-type development.
No, we appreciate that. I think we talked before about the architecture of tenants being sort of their, they call it trade dress, where the building is colored and signs are colored and all of that stuff. But al- also with that, a lot of companies want drive-throughs and things like that, and that doesn't seem to be what you've done here, and I'd rather have what you've done here than the other, so.
This really looks good. You oughta go take a look at it.
Mm, it is, it's beautiful.
The, the building where the, the, the Press Paninis, that was supposed to be when Dunkin' Donuts was speaking to us before we had the traffic all finalized, that actually does have a drive-through. They have, it's a one-lane drive-through. It's behind the building. You can't see it from anywhere, and it's been, been not a problem. That said, you know, there's no plan for a drive-through in this development at this time anyway.
We got no shortage of Dunkin' Donuts so far. Thank you for that presentation. Where else would you like us to go with our conversation tonight?
I'd just like to ask one more question.
Sure, Stan.
You showed a very nice picture, and how many units in here about 44?
Forty-eight.
In each building?
That's 48 on a fourth, on a four-story building.
Yeah, the four-story buildings are 48 unit buildings.
'Cause I was just wondering, it's a lot of units, you said there's two stairwells and one elevator. What about two elevators and one stairwell?
There haven't been any issues at the, at what we've had currently.
Okay, I just was wondering, 'cause you have a lot of units, and I was wondering if one elevator was sufficient.
Yeah, I, I think if, I think if, if there was an issue with one elevator not being sufficient, we'd obviously look into or do, doing to or, or, well, we would, would put two. We would look into it, we'd, we'd put them in if it didn't work, but, so far, the, we started with the 36-unit buildings, which was the phase one of this development. Those were three-story, 36-unit buildings, no issues. And two, two buildings occupied now, one fully occupied? Two buildings occupied and the 48 units, and, and no issues, so.
Because occasionally that elevator's gonna break down, and you better have a local person that can fix it quick with four stories.
Yeah, I mean, there, we do have, they have emergency services with the elevator service companies that we do have. Most of the residents that we do have in the community actually prefer to use the stairs. The elevators are used very infrequently, more as for like bringing home groceries or, or packages or those kind of things. Because the elevator's in the center of the building and the stairwells on the ends, depending on where the apartment is located, some people prefer to use the stairs, just 'cause of the location or even for, for exercise, to be honest, so.
Could you give a little bit?
It did look like you had one central.
Yes.
Entry.
What is the typical demographic age, kind of lifestyle, that sort of thing, professionals, that sort of thing?
It's, we've actually, when we first opened, 'cause of our location and the businesses around us, we have Oracle, BAE, Dell. We expected more of the young professionals, but we've actually drawn, you know, a wide range. We do have, of course, the young professionals because of the area we're in, the tech area. But we have everything up through empty nesters, retirees moving back to the area from Florida, Arizona, trying to come closer to their grandchildren, families, you know, those things. So we were surprised with what we drew, so it's, actually, it's a good mix.
And one thing we discussed last time we were here was, and it, we wouldn't, we didn't stay on it long. It was the number of, the possible impact of students in the school system. So I don't know if you can throw a number, the number of kids in there.
I think last time we checked, with 180 apartments, which was our phase one, was the five buildings. I believe the ages, it's a school age, we don't really break it down, whether it's, you know, infant to, you know, 17, because anyone 18 or older is considered an adult in the apartments. I think there was a total of, I think, 80 children roughly that was living at the community. But again, I, give or take, I, I believe is what it was, so.
Eighty in how many apartments?
It was 180.
Here's out the formula that we get from, Tim. When we talk about the entrances and the separate entrances for the residential and all that, I fully understand what you did there, and I'm not steering in a different direction, but if you had this development on two sides of a driveway and then that led past this to residential, I don't think that that would be uninviting to anybody that wanted to go back there for, live, live back there and have this kind of up near the road. I know that this has got kind of a shape that doesn't really support that kind of a layout.
The St. Obane building really is a, really put a monkey wrench in the whole thing.
Webb isn't gonna do you any favors either.
Let's not pick on St. Obane. They've been a decent member of the community for a long time. Let's invite the folks behind you to say something if they'd like to. Do members of the public or abutters wish to weigh in? Have anything to say about the proposal? You two are the only ones here. Come forward to a microphone, though. You have to get to a microphone. Get to a microphone, introduce yourself.
I guess my question is, my name is.
Could we have a name?
Should I sit down?
Yep, please, all the way down. There we go.
And have a name.
Now the microphone will work.
My name is Neil Baker. I live at Webster Green. So I guess my question is, I'm the condo association across the way from the development, and how will this affect us? We were watching this broadcast earlier, and we learned that New Hampshire DOT would effectively develop stoplights, perhaps?
Our traffic consultant is doing, he's done a traffic study. He's revising that based on the latest layout that we have. The last part of his study, which I don't think is gonna change, would require a traffic signal right here in the big box area.
Directly, across from, all right, so across from Hot Rise?
Rochet's Oil and the Lambert.
Yep, yep.
Kevin, you gotta be by that microphone too. Sorry. Sorry to be the microphone ruler. Yeah, your entrance is over there, and that's not proposed to be signalized in this.
All right, so the next signal would be down by the oil company?
We got it.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Potentially if the big box ever comes into existence.
All right, and then the second question, I guess, we have had complaints of different smells, I guess, coming from the company that we all love, St. Obane. So for commercial companies, there would be no industrial companies?
We've got 120,000 square foot industrial way down here. Everything else is retail, retail, always a retail, retail, restaurant.
No, it's not filled, 120, I assume? 120.
This one here?
It's not filled.
No, this is, this is a, this proposed would have to come into the site plan at some point. We previously came in with basically this building located here. We already have site plan approval. So by this point, we're holding off.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, please put your name on this, on the clipboard, sign in on that so that. I forgot to take notice that Zina isn't here tonight taking her minutes, so not helping her out with these names.
When we do our site visit with, with the board, does anybody, does anybody, is anybody interested in seeing the apartments in Nashua? I know it's a bit out of the way, or give you some directions to, to check it out on your own?
It may be to check out on your own rather than kind of get a tour of it, but, yeah, if you give us.
All right, I'll send an email out.
Ma'am, would you like to speak to, or are you all set with the, I'll say, okay. And nobody else in the room, so we'll close. And nobody else in the room, so we'll close the public hearing piece of the puzzle. I wa- I wanted to make sure that we had the dialogue that you asked us to on the density of the apartments, and, um, I, I know that when we looked at it before, you can kinda create an odd configuration of the land that you use for calculation, come up a way to make that work, and I'm sort of more of a what's on the ground approach to things, and if drawing a funny line on a piece of paper doesn't change the number of people that are living here, and I think that this density is fine, which is what I said before. I don't know if everybody else agrees, but that's my impression, is that I don't have any problem with this number of units on this site, given that it's water and sewers covered, and, um, you've got so much uh, that you've done to enhance the green space and really get low-impact development going on, other than obviously the big monster big box.
Mr. Chairman? Just for clarification, when you get your traffic study, you're sending that to LCD, CLD?
Yes.
Okay, before you, you come back, so we could review it too.
Absolutely.
Nelson?
Yeah, Bob, just to pick up on what you said, this is a much better layout I didn't like. Never liked that zigzaggy, uh, property line that you drew. The thought came to me since, uh, the, uh, Webb has disappeared from this site, that, uh, if you just took that line and extended it down straight instead of jogging it over, you could add enough land to your, uh, residential plot to satisfy the, the requirement for the town for the amount of space you had.
Yeah, Web has not completely left the building.
Yeah.
So, there, I, I actually was, I spoke with him last, last week. So they have, while the formal deal is no longer in effect, they are still hanging around.
Yeah.
Um, and we're willing to talk to them and see if we can rework something, um, at this point, uh, which we're doing. We're actively doing, we're actually very actively following up with any of their concerns and, and so on, and working our way through it.
And if not them, then potentially somebody else.
You must, you must be pretty confident that they're gonna go forward since you've
Well, I, I can tell you, you know, that they, they, they basically sent us a letter saying, you know, we're out. And we're like, alright, you're out, it's like, whatever. Then we got a phone call five days later. Alright, well, we're ready to talk to you again. It's like, what are you talking about? You just sent us a letter saying you're not interested. So, a lot of back and forth between, uh, me and, uh, John Flatley, and I met with the Webb people and got their concerns, uh, sent them the permit that we received from alteration of terrain, as well as this board for the building that was previously approved back there. There's a little bit more work to do, I think, uh, with them. And maybe something comes up, maybe it doesn't, if not, then
Then you've got a different plan, right?
Uh, I mean, I, you know, this, that, that area behind St. Obain really has always been pegged aside for industrial use, you know, it's, it's near the, the railroad, which is obviously is not a, in a butter. Uh, even here, it's, you have the power lines on one side and the railroad on the other, so there's, there's really no, uh, no residential effects to, to that location, so.
I, I think for the purpose of this plan, we're, we're requesting that that area not be considered as
Yeah.
as area for us to increase or, or available, thank you.
Yeah, no, but you are cutting it off from your, you will have a subdivision here that will cut it off, make it a separate parcel, which will be an industrial parcel.
That's correct.
Only you won't be able to do what you're doing here. Maybe you could do what you're doing here better if you had the more land to work with. I don't
Well, I, I don't, uh, I think what we proved with the last plan is that we actually don't need the FW Webb plan, and I don't believe there are any requirements for lot geometry. What we've done with this plan is just tried to address, um, the practical aspects of it.
I think the only, the only change, I think, if it was included, this may be more, you know, retail, commercial, and this building would be located here, and then maybe another one over here at some point in the future. Um, but really, from here, really over to here, that's really all, always been pegged as industrial just due to its location on the site behind St., you know, between St. Obain and the railroad tracks.
St. Obain really
Well, it's not only St. Obain, we actually had someone come to us, uh, just, just very informally, uh, looking at space for three hundred and fifty thousand square feet with, with railroad access. Like, yeah, here you go. So, I mean, I don't know where that stands, that's really not my, not my bag as far as the company goes, but, um, you know, all this, these, these trails used to be
Rail lines.
Rail lines, so whether that can get reconnected or reincorporated, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's really out of the picture at this point, but just figured, feel you.
Okay.
But even if FW Webb doesn't come through, um, there isn't a sense that it would ever be incorporated into this retail residential concept that you have going on over here, okay?
Okay, just wanted to make that clear, that that's just an industrial site now, once you cut it off.
Right, and I mean, every time I've spoken with Mr. Flatley, it's, it's, this has really been pegged for that section of the parcel for industrial use. I mean, if nothing happens with it in the next fifteen years, could that change? I suppose it could. But I mean, there's, there's been literally not a ounce of discussion about that being anything other than industrial since, since I walked through the door, so.
The thing, the thing that, uh, I actually hope they come in, but it adds another problem, because it's a lot of trucks for a million square feet or a, a big warehouse.
It has, it has its own elements, for sure.
Yeah, so, but as far as the railroad goes, from what I understand, 'cause we talked about it before, there's a steep grade there, and to try to use it to load and unload.
Well, there's a steep grade here this way, but if you go this way and you follow right where this thing's going, that actually used to be a rail bed.
Is that right?
Yes.
Right through here, you know, connected to the track somewhere down this area. So, it, it can be done. I, I wasn't around when those, when that rail line was there, I think it was removed five years ago or ten years ago, I'm not even sure, but, um.
'Cause you, you look at the, uh, lumberyard right over the Bedford line, with all the lumber they bring in and the trucks, it's not really a problem as far as traffic goes.
Right.
But they get a lot of deliveries there too
Yeah.
by train.
Understood, but that parcel's not before us tonight, so as long as you're saying it's not gonna be part of this?
I just wanted to make it clear for the record. The other thing I'd like you to look at, and I know it's a little bit off-site, maybe off-target, but that sidewalk that comes up to Route Three from the residential area and heads toward the Homestead and Dead Ends, I wish that sidewalk could extend to, to Homestead. Now, I'm just saying that, I know, and
You're making your Christmas list today, 'cause it's not their property.
Oh, you, you, you could, you could park here and then just kinda walk in the back door?
Well, yeah, why not?
There may be more than a few folks that live in there that wouldn't mind walking up that trail to the back of the parking lot of Homestead and having a few beers on the deck and heading back.
Just a thought.
Well, the, the pedestrians are gonna make that path for you, it's a matter of whether you're gonna support it or not, so. Um, is there anything else that we need to, uh, deal with or address or provide you some feedback on tonight? I, I guess I, I didn't get a sense of the density waiver from everybody. It would be good just to get clarification that that would be something that board would support. I hear Lynn saying she doesn't think it's a problem. Desiree?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't think it was a problem last time when we talked about it, and I agree, it's not an issue in this case.
Stan?
Go with it.
Tom?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm okay with it, basically, seeing the amount of residential you're putting into this entire development area and realizing this whole thing as one unit is being considered. If we have to break it off into a parcel and say, okay, the density per unit area is, is different here, I don't have a problem with that. I, I think the project and the plan offers a lot of good things when you take everything into account.
Thank you.
Mike? Nelson?
Yes.
Does that work for you? Anything else that we need to address or talk about? Now, we're waiting on some traffic studies, we wanna get a date for doing a sidewalk. It's usually a good idea to discuss a date and pick a date while we're here, so that it's got some public notice component to it. Um, but if you need to take a look and figure out what works, we can do it through the Community Development Department as well. What do you guys think?
Yeah, we could pick a date now if there's a date that the board normally
We usually do these things early on a Saturday morning. October's Saturdays, um, the eleventh is obviously this week, that's pretty close. Eighteenth, twenty-fifth, um, November first, eighth, and fifteenth. How much time do you need to do the flagging that you wanna do?
We could get it done in a, you know, within a week, certainly.
Okay, so if we aim for any of the dates after, say, October eighteenth? October twenty-fifth or November first? What are those, board think of those two dates? Okay.
Go do it in the morning, do it fairly early in the morning.
That's typically what we've done, is done them fairly early in the morning, get them over with, um, so we don't take away somebody's Saturday. But it tends to have to be a Saturday if we're gonna get everybody to participate, since most of us can't make it during the week. You don't need two weeks, but you need four days or something like that, is that?
Mr. Mo- Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we go for the October twenty-five.
So Saturday morning, October twenty-fifth, nine o'clock?
What time?
Nine, eight, eight, nine, eight, nine?
Seven, seven thirty.
Okay, I hear nine o'clock by the maker of the motion. Desiree, did you have your hand up for a question or a second?
Second.
A second for October twenty-fifth at nine in the morning. Any other discussion? All in favor? We have a date for a sidewalk on your site. Um, let's meet, where, where's the good place to meet? At the fire department?
The Homestead for breakfast. Sorry about that.
I don't know where they're open.
But we can have lunch afterwards.
Bagel Cafe has opened the, uh,
The Hot Rise? Oh, yeah, they'll be open early, it's
Is St. Obain, is St. Obain open on the weekends?
I don't think they are, but we could certainly m- meet around that front driveway for St. Obain and then figure out where to park and take a walk from there.
Yeah, why don't we meet in here and we, you know, if we wanna drive over here, we can maybe park at the water tower and
Yeah.
it'll be right in the middle of everything.
Okay.
That's not good.
Sounds good. Jillian will take care of whatever we need to do on public notice for that. Any other business? When do you wanna come back with this, um, driveway information? I mean, traffic information and all that. And what else, is there anything else that we need to accomplish between now and then in terms of the proposal? Phasing is gonna be an issue that we need to have some significant discussion about at some point, um, so that we can figure out how we have, um, both commercial and residential from the beginning.
In each phase.
In each phase.
Mr. Chairman, it'd be, it would probably be wise not to try and go for a meeting till after the sidewalk, so I mean,
Site, yeah.
site stroll. So you're looking at November, the, the first meeting in November.
Which is
Not the fourth.
Fourth and eighteenth are the planning board meetings in November, or December second is taking before the joint meeting. Or December sixteenth.
The second is a joint meeting.
The, the time-wise too, is the traffic study and getting it approved by LCD? CLD, LCD, getting late. That was a test to see who was awake.
We've got the traffic study from the applicant's consultant, we just haven't had a chance to review it yet, is that correct?
No, CLD have actually wrote a, written a critique.
CLD has reviewed it, given comments back. Um, our traffic guy is looking at them, he's gonna need a couple more weeks, he said, today's the seventh, so twenty-first, so he gets a report out by the twenty-eighth. I think November fifth will be pushing it, it'll be pushing CLD to get a report back to you and have us time to look at it, so how about the second meeting in November?
Which is November eighteenth, unless, that's not Thanksgiving week, so we've got a meeting on November eighteenth, is that correct? Um, not November eighteenth, December second is now the joint meeting.
December, yeah, don't go for that one. So we're going on the eleven eighteen.
The fourth is election day.
The fourth, November fourth is election day, yeah, let's not do that.
May, Mr. Chairman, then may
So, November eighteen.
May I make a motion that we continue this matter till November the eighteenth at seven thirty PM in this room with no further notice of two or butters?
Second for that?
Sure.
Second by Lynn. Any other discussion on continuance? Any other business you'd like to attend to before we vote to continue it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Seven zero zero to continue.
Thank you very much.
See you in a month and a half or so, actually, we'll see at your site in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
They should be meeting on the second Tuesday for the month, 'cause the planning board's the first and third.
I don't know, I've got them in my calendar the wrong day maybe.
I don't know what happened, eighteenth is what I had it in as well.
What?
You referring to the site, sidewalk?
Yeah. When's the next meeting? It'll work out.
When's the next meeting of your bike pedestrian group?
Next, next week. Oh, I, I know why we moved it, it's because we, did we move it off the elec- no, the election's the fourth, isn't it? I don't know. We'll work it out.
Twenty-fifth would be in the Thanksgiving week, yeah, that wouldn't have done that.
Can't do it twenty-fifth.
We'll let the office sort it out.
I love you, where you said that.
Okay, that brings us to item five on our agenda, which is discussion on possible action regarding other items of concern. Bowers Landing of Merrimack LLC, uh, we required them to come back to show us their sidewalk layout. They've asked for a continuance, uh, of their opportunity to do that, and so we should discuss and vote on a future date for them to show us their sidewalk plans.
Did they give you an idea as to when?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, they have, they did in fact ask to be placed on November the fourth meeting, and I would make a motion that we give a continuance till November the fourth, two thousand and fourteen, seven thirty PM in this room, uh, with no further notice to any butters.
This election day, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, before we take a second, I would suggest that despite their request, that we put them on the November eighteenth meeting to try to keep that fourth clear, but, I don't know, Jillian, do we have a sense of what's going on for the November fourth agenda this early, or we have no idea at this point? So I'd like to not have a meeting on election day again, if we can avoid it, unless we have absolutely urgencies, and that's not an urgency.
I'll amend my motion, Mr. Chairman, to November the eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven thirty in this room.
Second to put our friends on the eighteenth. By Lynn, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Seven zero zero to continue them. I did not read at the beginning of our meeting when our next planning board meeting and bike pedestrian meeting is, so the bike pedestrian meeting will be October fourteenth, seven thirty, in the Memorial Conference Room, which is not this room. That's the thing, on the other side of the Town Hall. Our next planning board meeting is October twenty-first here in this room. And that's all I've got for other items of concern, unless you have some. Mike?
Uh, what is the outcome from the Tamesian Drive, um, slope issue?
I don't know. Um, the slope issue Oh, oh, yes, 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 yes. They are we were, we have something going on with them that's gonna bring them back before us, and I think that would be the occasion to decide whether we wanna reconsider that slope, and that would allow Kyle to come back before that. Substantively, whether we're in favor of reconsidering or not, it's probably a discussion to have then, so that the applicant and Kyle Fox are able to do that. Um, but yes, thank you for remembering to remind us to do that. I forget when we told them that they're coming back, or when their next opportunity before us is on that subdivision, 'cause they did not get final approval at our last discussion, correct?
I think they're on our draft agenda for the twenty-first.
For October twenty-first.
October twenty-first.
So we'll have a chance to see them in a couple weeks. I did forget to rem- suggest or throughout the date that a, the date for the joint meeting of the planning board and the zoning board, which had been discussed for December ninth, isn't a date that works for all of the various calendars and schedules and problems, so we're gonna try to aim to do that joint meeting on December second instead of December ninth.
And I can confirm, Mr. Chairman, that following discussions during the course of the day, the people from the New Hampshire Conservancy have agreed to the change and will be here on the second. Please don't change it again.
We'll hold that one still, so, um, joint meeting of planning zone, what's that? We'll hold that one still. So, joint meeting of planning zone, what's that?
He says, who is the New Hampshire Conservancy?
Karen, Karen Dudley from the New Ham...
This is something that Pete gagged at, suggests, these are soil scientists.
Hang on, I'll tell you, in a few, give me 30 seconds, I'll tell you who they are.
I don't care about their names, I just wanted their function.
Yeah, the function is to provide some information about soil science and how it affects what we do and what the zoning board does.
She's from the NRCS in, NR, in New Hampshire, I don't know, NRC, NRCS, in Concord, New Hampshire, and they're gonna give us a presentation on soils and that sort of thing, which Pete wanted to do, because I think Pete felt that, because he's been the expert on this matter to the large extent for 30-something years, he felt that we should all learn a bit more about it, rather than having him sitting here.
And we were going to do that in conjunction with the ZBA?
It was agreed that it would be done at the joint meeting, because it was felt the ZBA needed the education as well as we did.
Yes, but that's no longer the case.
Yes, it is now. It's been rescheduled to the joint meeting on December 2nd.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. And please, I heard that part.
And that's my doing for confusing the issue to be in...
No, it wasn't your fault. Just got confused.
Any other items of concern, discussion items? Seeing none? Approval of minutes of September 23rd, 2014? We have a motion for approval as printed, is there a second? Second by Stan to approve as printed. All in favor?
I have a...
Any other discussion? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining?
The bicycle committee comments. I have, so on page seven, I'm trying to figure out how to correct this here, so starting at line seven on page seven, it says, Desiree Fault said that the committee would overlay maps to the Nashua Regional Planning Commission, NRPC. Period? Because the second one is, we're saying, who will help with the wording, they weren't, they're not gonna help with the wording. We also need to get legal information about the payment in lieu of sidewalks, so maybe we say, we will get information, the committee. Ah, my pen broke. And, yeah, so, period.
I have no idea what...
Can I try it again? Does that make, alright, so, alright, so we're gonna take out, thank you, I broke my pen. Alright, so, at the end of NRPC, it'll be period, and then we'll take out, who will help with wording and, and then we're gonna go, we will get legal information about the payment in lieu of sidewalks, period. We being the committee.
Jillian, have you got that, so you can convey it to Zina?
Seven, eight, seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, alright, I gotta correct it, thanks, that's it.
All in favor of approving the minutes as amended by Desiree, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor, seconded by Lynn. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.